Without work.
Did you even hear?
Um, parking machine in here, cause you have a folder and it's in my office. And I think it's just like a new folder and so when it make copies.
Oh, that's awesome.
The handbook, I just put it all in my same paper.
Thank you.
Well, if you don't need me, then I'm gonna leave.
Go ahead.
All right, get on.
And then I'll just. I'll carefully bring it up and then we'll figure it out. It's probably not for answering that, but.
If we have to.
That's pretty popular. I mean, of course, it doesn't really matter, we're already.
We've got some options there, we can write it out if we have.
That's mine.
We either. Sorry. Sorry, thank you. He said, I was the one. The whole. Some of you guys. I could show you. I went and joined, went by. So I did, and it just was what I forgot, obviously. Yeah, so I just went to my phone last night and I thought about my. I'm sorry, Tyler, I was just. Here, yes, it's. I tried, I was like, I'm just. Well, I figured a lot of them probably.
I liked it in the very.
He's got, he's got a date. Did you fix a lot?
I'm sure.
He's still wrong, man.
I already. So then. It's. Yeah.
They're saying. They're actually. Set their. And. Me. The housing. I think they're. They're saying. They're having. They also. Do. Exactly. He wants to. Kind of. That would be great.
See, Emily, I have a prize or shirt. Either time. Who came when he found me? Yes. I mean, I'm trying, I do. For their own side. Shirt. They were saying, well, they said, they scheduled. It's snowing, we gotta go. And they go out and. Always say. That's. We played for this. Third tire. See that? I can't even take it away. And so we're still. Or do we? She wants to. Actually, take that one, cause I'm gonna go make the shopping one of these. Like, yeah. So. So. We're showing. Yeah. We see. Yeah. Girls. He doesn't. But he's.
He doesn't have.
He doesn't. Just a gentleman. What he meant. No. You live. You know, like. He's. Heard that seems to run. That's what they're saying. I'm. Thirty two. There's so much. And so. You want. Just. No, I thought. Well, we have to.
But then again.
Yeah, that's probably.
Well. We have.
Hello. Yeah, I saw you. You had.
You don't seem like some happy hour.
Yeah.
Those things. I guess. I'm talking real. How about. Well, that is. Yeah. Same. Such. Like. Suddenly. Guy under strange. It's. How you read it. Yeah. That would be almost like. Long. Who's. I don't know.
Okay. Okay.
They don't.
Don't worry.
Those who. I think. This is. There's. That's. You were.
Yes. Go ahead. It's. Oh. I'm worried. You stop. Too much. So. I don't pay them too much money. Well. I mean, they really. That. Okay, that should come from. I don't know how much. I don't probably like that. Can't do that. Uh, oh, yes. Power C.
Yeah. We're running. Hello. Again.
So. Right. It's. It's. Okay.
Because we. That mission is on.
Is there any progress with the building?
I love everybody. So. See, the.
Was. I wish. A few.
I know.
That. I don't. So. You know, many sign.
Oh, yeah. Morning.
Just saying. Sure. Actually.
Yeah. I think that's.
Minutes for that. They haven't done that.
I showed.
She was.
Yeah. I think it's have to be. Really.
She was so. One of these have start down.
We've. So. Say, um. No.
Because. We used to prove the money. That's. Okay. All right, I just wanna make sure. Sorry. Three hundred and forty thousand. I'm learning. I don't. I don't. They will take it.
It's like. Very obvious.
Because. And you. And you.
I'm sort of.
It was. You're right there. Everyone. They might have us in good space, which I just don't know. I don't. I don't. I don't. This is. So.
It looks like the biggest.
You know, I don't exactly.
Got you. Got you. In row, yeah. So. Probably.
There's a. Perfect. By the.
We never. Stay.
There's. At least.
Yes.
Hey. Uh. How is it gonna be? Okay. Who's? Or who's? Who's gonna? Who's? Who's Bailey's gonna be late? He has. He has. For some reason. Okay. Seven o'clock.
I know. And I get bills. I don't pass.
Uh, Bill. First. You must be.
Three, three, four.
All right, at six o'clock. Sorry, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the. Which stands. For the patient. I've got. In the. 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 For. Hello, everybody. The Monday, March seventeenth. Two thousand twenty five, meeting of the county council, we are in quorum. We will start on time and we are going to stay on time. If you want to take them. Amy, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna read what I wrote down, so I don't miss anything. And then when it will. It out. So, I came to update you on the Bass Lake Beach and Campground renovation project into aspired chain order. To the project as we need um to use existing funds in our budget for projects that were not included in the original scope of work. In the fall. I came to understand that the Bass Lake renovation project did not include a new roof. And there was no plan to have any central air, so no insulation was going to be installed. And existing gas lines were going to be capped. I brought this to the park board and was decided amongst the board that it would be best to include these projects in the final scope. We intend to use the Bass Lake Beach House for community events and rentals all through the year and believe this is the best value for the community. So we would like to use the carry forward funds that already exist in our budget in the cash fund for these projects. And it's our hope that we'll be allowed to begin these projects as soon as possible with your blessing. And I did bring to show you. These would be the additional cost to the project.
You. Did you get bids for these or?
Yes, so I have those with the park board already voted on the bids. Thank you. Yep. So, yeah, so the park board um did on the bids. Which Rick Green was able to get. For us. It's been a great help. And those are the quote bids that the park board then decided on. So the roof cost would be for all the buildings except for the two pavilions on the north and south end. That's all roofs. Um, and we did, so I guess they dropped the roof from the original scope because they thought it didn't weak. And they wanted to save some money. So at first I thought it was just aesthetic that we needed a new roof, but they started cleaning the chimneys and. Water came in where they were cleaning the chimney, so that is. We have to now. Do that and then gutters just on the beach house. And then the gas lines and insulation will be done by the existing crew working now.
So. Did you say you have funds available for these already?
Right, so our cash um fund right now is about a hundred and twenty six, seven thousand. So the total of these um projects is around seventy seven five, which would leave us around currently right now. Leave us still seventy seven three.
It's it's not budgeted, it's what's left in their fund that it.
Absolutely. It leaves forty nine thousand. If you take seventy seven, five one seven from one twenty six, seven hundred, that equals forty nine thousand.
Okay.
Two hundred and forty three.
I'm terrible at math.
So so the grant project, though, they never bid on a, they never included a roof on that?
No.
For like a million dollars or like, cause we're giving five seventy five for that, I think that this is gonna be the hard thing is the. Public's gonna be like, wow, you're already doing five seventy five.
Yeah.
That didn't include a roof.
Mm hmm.
You thought that would be on the scope. But.
Right, I was surprised when I, it was about a month after I started this draft. We went to the pre-ven meeting, that's when I found out no roof. And it was later than I found out no heat or was going to be put in either.
So I'm just gonna ask this. Because I've had a few roofs put on and. That's about the size of a house. Forty three thousand dollars seems like an amazingly high quote for a roof to me.
Well, it's not just the beach house for us, it's all the buildings. So the beach house, the camp bathroom, the bathroom on the beach side, the ice.
All the roofs have been determined to be bad, like I don't remember them being.
Well. I. I don't know about the others, so we had gotten quotes and I think the park board just decided to keep it all consistent.
I mean, like prophylactic roof change, though, like. You know what I'm saying, like, we're already giving five hundred and seventy five thousand.
But you're not giving anything, we're just taking this out of.
No, but. I understand. It's still, it's still tax dollars.
We're still in terms of the money.
I don't wanna say tax. Because my time will get spent if I say that, but.
That it's.
Revenue that belongs to the taxpayers.
Right.
So it appears by looking at this, to do the beach house twenty six thousand eight hundred, right?
Mm hmm. Your better reaching.
That's true. Um, yeah, that's kind of a Dave, I mean.
Amy, is that, is that a metal roof or is it?
Mm hmm, metal, all metal.
And can we did that like with more than one fender?
Yes. Rips. Yeah.
I've heard of these people.
They're out of class, I can see.
It would look nice if they're all one, I I'm not, did I?
Yeah.
Just, you know, like.
Well, at first I thought it was just going to be for looks and it might be different if that were the case, but the beach house definitely and the garage both.
We're actually getting all painted too, one of the beach house will get insulation on top of the roof. Because on the inside, there's no place to put insulation. And all the other buildings out those will be uh metal and.
Yes. Also soft and facia and roof.
Yeah, only, only on the beach house.
A little bit out, yeah, yeah, and. I think you gotta quote for.
For.
Mm hmm. That was interesting.
The insulation has twenty six thousand dollars for the beach house only.
Mm hmm.
And they're. And that's plus their proof insulation board down too on top of the beach house. On top of including with their bid.
So here's what those.
And Melissa says this, this, here's the quote from now. But. So.
You mentioned something about heating and air conditioning, will that just be something that's other type future project?
Yeah. Just so it's not, you know, capped and gone forever.
Why the gas line so much?
Six thousand dollars.
Here's. I I think.
Yes.
But I I think that's something I could be looked at because we're mentioning too that I think it's. We should have, it could probably be a smaller line and save some money.
Uh, Brown Brown bid it. And they are uh running inch and a half, which. There's no reason why we need inch and a half gas line running across the building. Could only need three quarter.
It must. Alice is gonna have a kitchen.
We're only heating fiber, you know, the. Uh, wood, wood, like woodstoves. Not wood stove, but.
Oh, it's not gonna tend on the meter. Or anything.
Yeah.
At the BTUs.
So that is not there and way over. Yo.
Yeah. Definitely, there is. Cause there were things that we cut out of the project because we didn't have enough money to to do it all. So once we did that, there was about thirty thousand that was still. Left over, we haven't allocated that one either, so some of that could come from. This. Or at least it could be used as a reimbursement cost for.
If they.
Does make sense, but I mean, the care. I I'd just be worrying about it, Todd said that's only forty nine thousand a carryover, you're getting low than a year. You know, your carryover cap.
That's why I mentioned that thirty minutes left over, we haven't allocated that yet, so I mean, that could be reimbursed, I think it's. The carryover is.
So. Yeah, I mean. So. So my question. And what the rest of the board thinks about it, what park board thinks about it? So. Since the beach house is the one we're spending all the money on. I mean. If it's leaking, I can see putting a low on that. I mean, that makes sense, but.
Your garage.
I mean. We can wait on whatever we can wait on, because that's gonna put you in a.
I think we can do on the phases. I don't know why we could.
Cash fund.
Why we couldn't do the roof on the beach house and and those are the gutters that go on the beach house. That only makes sense that we would. We could do that, but. Explain to us about insulation.
Yeah.
Is there insulation up in the roof that they're they're putting on?
What, they're gonna do insulation on the roof if they do the new metal.
Well, it it's it's in the, it's in the, it's in the contracts here with them that. This button is putting, they're putting it in there, they're putting, they're putting insulation board down before. They put the metal roof, this is put.
Okay, so that's part of the, that's part of this twenty six thousand eight hundred dollars?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
So that's part of that roof.
Yes.
So we could, I I think we could surely do that in the gutters for sure.
What?
The in, the insulation.
What is the insulation?
The, the other insulation I think is for the internal. So that when we do get ready to. Be able to do. Heat inside, control furnace or whatever, there were not heating ability that has no insulation and it's all.
But but the, but the problem with that is, I correct if I'm wrong, just trying to figure this out. If you insulated, none of those walls are gonna be finished. Is is this for insulated for the walls or for the ceiling or what? So. I mean, if you're gonna put insulation in the walls and we're not gonna finish the wall.
That was my thoughts too.
I mean, why would the insulation go in now?
That's what these twenty seven thousand dollars for the insulation of the walls and the uh drywall and the mud and the paint.
Yeah, there's.
That should be carried over.
Okay, cause, cause I didn't see that. Cause we see that. So that's for finishing the whole inside. Okay.
Cause she originally told us that the in inner walls are being redone. But the construction people said, no, they're just painting them. And if you see the inside of those walls, they can do that.
And what? So this is just. That's why I point you back to the meetings, I told you, you never should have picked them for a construction event or.
My my fear is.
Yep.
My my fear is, is Amy has got a lot of good ideas and and a lot of uses that we could really make that. Uh, an integral fixture in Stark County. I don't wanna stifle, stifle her from. Uh. From meeting those goals or those ideas and and really for what we have talked about as usage, we need that insulated out there and we need it to be heated. And I think there'll be opportunities that we can. Lease that that out for different functions, I think, I think revenue would come back. So I think it's a good investment. Um, I think that we ought to consider the roof on the beach house.
Yep.
The gutters. Um. And the insulation, I I don't know the gas line.
Is is the gas line in the walls or something, is that why, does it have to be not done now or?
In the attic. Go into the attic and down to each fireplace. Or furnace.
So so, so the gas lines are there now?
No, they need to be installed, but like I said, they're running inch and a half gas lines, which way too big.
This is like a lie, isn't it?
So we could reduce that estimate if they.
So you want, you need naturally need bigger lines.
I would li, I would like to rebid that for somebody else. And as far as the roof, I'd recommend doing all the buildings, cause the other buildings is put on the same time. And if you wanna see some of the other bids from all the bidder, someone bid at ninety thousand dollars.
I was gonna ask if they, if they factored that in, that they'd be there doing one job, so we were kinda getting.
But if you wanna see all the bids, he was the cheaper, cheapest. Of course, I know, he's my neighbor, he built my ballpark.
I don't.
Done building.
I don't wanna jeopardize her not.
All all builders.
I I'm just so.
Well, I feel like if. This. As far as this project goes. With the beach house, the idea of it being used for rental and for events, that's gonna bring people into the county. If they, if there are wedding receptions there, how many people can? Pass.
Fall.
Okay. And so they're gonna need lodging, they're gonna be eating, we're gonna be bringing a lot of. Forest money in just by people hosting events there.
Funds coming in. For. So.
And I think, so the metal roofing, what color is it gonna be?
Right, I think it looks, I think it's gonna be sort of a gray roof and then a blue exterior, maybe like cream.
And so the, if we only did the roof on the beach house, what are the current, the roofs look like on the other?
Brown and they've been there for.
It's probably looking. I think aesthetically, I wanna do it all. Metal, it's not gonna get any cheaper between now and a year from now or now and.
You know, we're. In this one. shape of the other roof, they were put on about the same time.
Yeah, more likely, I would say.
Those other ones could spring like anytime.
I'm sure the other ones may be too, but we just.
So would you be?
So. So we're. We're at seventy, seventy one thousand, three eighty eighty to take out. The gas line, if we think that's an overkill.
Well, I think it, I think you need the gas line in there because you want it for winter events at summer. But maybe we can get an estimate for a smaller pipe that might reduce that cost a little bit, if you're saying that.
Yeah. I get more calls for the gas line, just long as we get it done before they start.
Yeah.
Putting in. We don't stay here.
And that's what I'm saying.
You know. Hold this off, and we'll hold this off, it's gonna be.
I have, I have one question, that this will hit home for you as an engineer. I only have one other question, cause I I don't deny that, you know, either that it needs it or whatever, but. It says put purlings on metal roof and snow rail on the building, doesn't say anything about tearing off the old shingles. Do we know structurally that that's gonna be sound enough to carry the weight of the shingles and the metal roof?
Yeah.
My house has a metal roof and I have a layer of shingle to under it.
Why don't you put a vapor buried?
Does it know anymore? They don't even, you don't even have to put down purlings, but if I find an over staying over. Later on, really? Later on.
Has a. Has a building ever been inspected by a building inspector to answer today's question? Get up and look at the rafters and look at the, look at the structure and make sure it's sound.
Like I said.
They have looked at.
Has it ever been looked at by an engineer for?
But they looked at it and they said the roof was structurally sound, but just this week it was leaking.
Yeah. Structurally sound leaking could be diff, you know what I mean, I mean, I mean, my question is. I don't doubt that it leaks, but it, but it's still, the structure's sounding up.
I mean, the inside of the. Work at it, but, you know. Just put liability to somebody else.
Yeah.
And you have.
I've seen it and it does, the the main part, the center is all considered, you can see the whole ceiling up there.
Yeah.
All over. All the two before it looked good and they are sixteen inches on center. And. They all, it all looks pretty good.
So on this one, sixty four, that's a total, but is that supposed to be added to it? Because.
Yeah.
Oh, so it comes out, okay.
Yeah, so be.
You know, that one was ninety, okay, gotcha.
One other thing out there, Rick, um, there, there was two fireplaces when I was a kid, one on each end.
Now, I understand. Hole in that one and they must have boxed it in.
Yeah, so. When you, when you put a gas line in out there. And that would be awesome if we could return that to nineteen sixties. Beach house, now maybe not right away, but. When when we put enough gas line in there, could we make sure we had enough in case we ever would wanna put that other fireplace?
Thirty years, so three quarter would be play to run two of those, um, three quarter around two hundred BTU furnaces. So that's fine.
That was actually kind of the thought, is that we wanted to be able to do that now, so that. We don't have to go through that added expenses to do all that after everything's done.
Oh, that's not enough.
And the more it can be used throughout the year, the more money.
And I can remember there wasn't that many dinosaurs crossed the road out there as a kid, that I, was there really?
Not very many.
We'll know without the gas line.
Okay, I have a gas line.
I mean, what's? What's the will of the board, I mean?
Wouldn't it make Todd? Wouldn't it make sense to?
So, oh, I'm sorry.
Wouldn't it make sense to do the gas lines? Now also to keep while everything is exposed. Right, that's one, yeah, well, that was brought up a little bit ago, that way I have some.
Yeah, so we can make the motion of other that much, tell me what you said, Cassie?
I I think Bruce was getting ready to make.
I I'd like I'd like to make a motion that we accept this as uh submitted, but I also. Think we need to give Rick latitude that if we can save ourselves a couple thousand bucks or so. By reducing it to a three quarter inch line. So I wanna word my my motion this um way, that we accept. Um, this presentation with the. Acception of looking at the gas line to see if we could um. Lower our cost there, does that make sense to everybody?
So you wanna approve approve up to the seventy seven five one seven, that way there's an amount, otherwise.
Yeah, I I think so, but with the idea. Or or you wanna, or I'll even do, I'll do it differently if you wanna, I would put a motion in to do seventy six thousand. Dollars for the project.
You're making the motion, whatever you wanna do.
Well, do you think we could do it for that, Rick?
Oh, yeah.
Cause I don't wanna come back in and have to redo this, but. Would you be more, would the board be more comfortable with that?
So Bruce, Bruce has a motion on the floor. To take seventy six thousand out of the cash balance and what kind, what 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 fund are we transferring this money into?
It would go into the actual, I would think it would go into the.
Yeah, it's up to her, I don't know nothing about that.
I don't know if it's going to the project account or not. I guess.
Well, you guys think it should go out, that we didn't decide that.
Yeah, that's why we think too. Yeah, repair maintenance.
That's fine, but I think the thing of it is, is that uh. Amy wanted to be able to be able to do this project as quickly as possible, so if we can do that through the maintenance of of the of the park, that would be great.
Okay, so Bruce, we we have motion on the floor from Bruce to approve up to seventy six thousand dollars. To take care of the the roof, the gutters, insulation and the gas line. Possibly cheaper than what this this is stating.
I'll second that.
Yeah, if we have a motion of second, all favor. Yeah, motion period.
Well, that twenty seven thousand dollars, the insulation in the building is seventy nine hundred dollars. But with the grant, they got thirty thousand dollars left over from the grant money. So some of that grant money might take care of that, so it's kinda nice that you did go seventy six thousand dollars max. Not even spending that much.
All I ask is that you spend this money, make your a farmer.
No, I'm a farmer, you're a meat.
I'm still a farmer. Do we have a copy of the salary ordinance? That's what we're paying them, right?
It's an easy explanation. Alright, so um, the first thing I wanted to talk to you about is um, the discrepancy and the. Um, Board of Zoney Appeals account for salary, um, I was made aware earlier this year that. It's a thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars short.
Why, why is that?
Um, best explanation that.
There's only one.
When she asked the salary, the email went out, that was before the three percent raise was.
She wasn't in forty last year, she she wouldn't be invited to that.
So what that salary ordinance is what it is.
The salary ordinance says thirty eight two.
And how much were you paying her?
Thirty seven.
Why, why are we doing this? I I don't understand. What what do we appropriate? You remember any of this, Dave? I remember we did it, but. I gotta ask you a question.
The thirty seven.
Because I thought the reason that we approved this as a full-time position was because they were gonna be inspecting the peers. And the peers inspection is no longer.
And no, it wasn't for inspecting the peers, it would be to be helping take permits for peers. Put on the back burner.
So that's why, that's why. If this position should even be funded as full-time at all. Since that's not the case anymore.
Well, I, as I remember, we were being proactive because we were gonna do all of these peers out uh from outside of the lake. And so that's the way you, that's the way you all presented it to us. That you you, we were gonna be proactive, that we'd get her funding so we could afford. To have her as a full-time employee, I think we put the cart in front of the horse, because right now, when when do you foresee? Those needing those permits out the later.
Um, well, I mean, it's. We don't have an ordinance yet on it. And Planning Commission, they, I was instructed last year. That we were more worried about other things than.
But I don't think the state requires them on all existing peers, do they?
Well. Well, let me step in for a minute. My recollection of why we hired. I'm not clear, I don't think it was a hundred percent for the peers, Todd. That that I don't, I I mean, we can look back and search in the minutes, but I I don't think it was, I don't think it was. Because, just because of the peer permitting. I I I think it probably was a factor. At our meeting the other night, Mary, we we discussed, I think it was brought up by the public, we discussed the. The permitting of peers, and right now the state has done nothing with that. Right? The the D N R, when I, when I speak of the state.
Well.
Right now, we're, we don't have to, to, we're not, we're not, nobody's being required to permit. Peers.
So. Right now. In our floodplain uh prevention ordinance. Um, with flood damage prevention ordinance, I can't remember what it's called exactly, um. It does require permits. For temporary structures. Um, and a temporary structure is defined as. A peer falls into that category, so does dry hydrants, so does boat lifts and things of that nature.
So does there have, do all those things have to go through the Board of Zoning Pills?
No.
Then I don't know why somebody that's employed by the Board, the Board of Zoning Pills are doing that.
It was. It was, the position was to also as part-time help for the Planning Commission. When it was proposed to you guys, it was part-time help for the Planning Commission and part-time for B Z A. So basically, half her time that she spends during the week is for the B Z A and half of it is for the Planning Commission. Um, which, I mean, we are continually getting busier over there.
I I think just my opinion about this, since we hired, you know, we have her working at that. Position. And it's in our salary ordinance, I think we're behooved to pay her of the amount. But I think it's a little bit too early to start worrying about where we're gonna find that money, because by the end of the year. There's gonna be a thousand dollars somewhere. Or as it gets closer to the end of the year, there's gonna be a thousand dollars somewhere to find that. I don't think it would be worthwhile to consider an additional appropriation now, we've got plenty of payroll appropriated, you know?
We do it. We could do it in October.
I think we did. Good idea to earmark it and to see where, see where we're at.
I agree, Dave.
Okay, but I mean, I think for now. Justin could correct us if we're wrong, but I think that since she's been granted that position, to to try to reduce her salary by that amount would.
So we need to get. Should be paid whatever the salary ordinance says.
You know what, I'm not gonna sit here and say that you can't. Defund positions, I'm not gonna tell you to do that, but I mean, you control, I mean, I mean, do you have contractual obligation to pay somebody out? You know, if, I'm not her, for example, but because they can't fulfill the requirements of the job, no, not just because you funded it, if that's what you meant, Dave, but if you created the position. You are stuck with the creative position as to your budget, it's not to say the person in that position has to stay in that position. But it's a creative position for your budget year twenty twenty five, if that makes sense.
I I agree with Todd's thought though about how creating a new position, then it doesn't happen till this year, but it's still got a three percent raise when it didn't exist, you know, like that kinda thing, like. I see where you're coming from there.
Yeah, I mean, if it was. If it was a carryover from the year before and we opted not to do that by whatever reason, then it would be fair that it was done.
So this pay that we're we're shorty, or it's short eleven hundred and thirteen dollars. Any other employee, if they were hired on the spot, would receive her plate paid plus this eleven thirteen?
Yes, that's.
It's a, first year deputy pay is thirty eight two.
She's not getting paid what other employees doing. Or in her position is being paid.
The other deputies are all getting paid thirty eight two.
Yeah, but she's not really a deputy because she's not working for an elected official, so to speak. So that's kind of a different, kind of different classification in my eyes, I mean. But. We can, we have to do one of two things, either we pay it what the salary says, or we have to revisit salaries, cause we can change the pay.
Since we don't have the salary ordinance in front of us, she's characterized as a deputy right now.
I'm gonna run and get it.
Sorry, because Todd's right then, I mean. From what Justin just said too, I mean, you could make the, you could make the salary back.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I I think we are in comparison though to somebody maybe in another department. What, what their. So it's not.
I might have it too.
It's. Classified, maybe not a deputy, but classified. You you see, I mean, that, you know, apple, we gotta compare apples to apple.
Well, the only thing that bothers me, I I agree with what you're saying, Howard, but the only thing that beheathes me is that we created this position. Explicitly because there was gonna be this gigantic workload because of these peers, and that never came to happen. That never came to happen.
Yeah, maybe we should be looking at putting it back down to part-time.
I mean. That is the only reason, cause we had a hiring freeze on at that time, and that is the only reason we created that position, because we wanted to make sure that whoever was putting a peer in. The public were not gonna be in a bad way to go because they could not get get service or help, but now.
I mean, they are planning on revisiting their care order.
Well, then we gotta revisit the salary ordinance then.
Well. Is she? Does she? I wanna try to give Mary a chance to explain, is she? Looking for things to do, Mary, or is she forty hours a week staying busy at what she's doing?
She's staying busy.
Okay, I mean, I'm trying to answer, help them answer their question, she's staying, she's staying, she's not walking, working for things to do. Right? Okay.
I mean, but not trying to be what I am, but. We had the discussion previously about about making another full-time position before this all came up and we and we and we voted it down. Because of the salary, and the only reason, we can look back in the minutes. And I'm pretty sure the minutes will stay in there, that we created this to be proactive. To all these peers that are not there.
But I I think there was some discussion though that the Planning Commission was busier, the B Z A was busier, you know? And and I, I don't have to say too, I think part of the thing too was they were also at risk of losing the employee because the employee didn't get any benefits at part-time either, so.
But at the time, it was a bigger issue than what it is today too, correct? We're not doing the solar permitting. That we were doing, is that correct? It wasn't Boz or or Tom or somebody was on the road a lot. Doing these inspections, that, you're no longer doing that, are you?
Well, he still has solar inspection, yeah. And he will have solar inspections because of the projects that are. Um, permitted now.
They have four or five years on the road.
But I, but I guess I'm asking is, is that workload the same as it was a year ago?
I I would have to look into it, I mean, I, they've been having monthly meetings, I know, um, I know he went out today and met with next era.
I mean, we have a salary ordinance, I guess, so. You know, we're gonna have to follow what the salary ordinance is, we're gonna change salary ordinance and then. I would just say.
All the other clerks and deputies are all at thirty eight two.
I saw that. If we're not gonna do anything about it now, I'd say we're definitely gonna revisit revisit it come a bunch of time.
Well, and then as far as coming up with that money, I wouldn't suggest an additional appropriation now, just for a, for that item. There's gonna be some money left over somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, that, I agree, I agree with that. On the services, yeah.
What is she making now, Mary?
Thirty seven thousand eighty seven dollars.
And what's the ordinance says she should be making?
What about the retro too, Howard, like we have the retro back, but we didn't pay her two theoretically?
She's being paid at the thirty eight two.
Well, she is being, so.
Just the budget would run out by the end of the year.
Okay, she's still being, she, okay. She's being paid.
You're saying at the end of the year, we didn't, enough money wasn't appropriated. Just cause we forgot the three percent?
It it, that honestly doesn't make sense, it seems like we would have budgeted.
Doesn't make sense.
Unless somebody didn't budget at thirty eight two.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense.
When she was filling out her budget form, she went by by what she was emailed. Do my budgets like a month.
That that's an oversight, that's easily done, Mary, that's.
We're good, yeah.
Good news, I have money for us.
See, you do have money for, you guys all working in families, right, Howard?
Um, so. What I gave you guys is um, this is some quotes on getting some tablets. For the Planning Commission and the B Z A to use during the meeting, um.
You can have our tablets. I'm serious. The I T department, the cheap ones, but the I T department has them.
They're not new enough to work with.
Oh, they're Windows ten, they're not new enough to work with anything.
That we have a small stack of our Android. They're way far enough version that nothing current.
Can we get a discount if we got seven more?
We've tried to get them working.
Um, so the commissioners this morning, they um. Approved uh us getting these. Um, up to three thousand dollars to spend on it. With us splitting it um in half between the two penalty funds that we have, the. B Z A and the Planning Commission Penalty Fund.
So then you're, I was looking at the Samsung then, right?
Um, yeah, that's what they were kinda uh headed towards there. Um, one of the board members, Roberto here, um, she did mention that on Amazon, she was able to find. Actually, the same Samsung tablet. Was it ninety ninety dollars less? Yeah, and and again, it could have just been a sale that week, so it'll just depend on. So that's why they kinda, you know, gave us the up to three thousand dollars.
So that twelve would be enough for?
All the Planning Commission members and then the B Z A would share. Since they're right behind the Planning Commission, so some of them would get used twice in one night.
And then they would all stay here, huh?
Yes.
Todd did kinda fill you in and I'm.
That's fine.
Anybody that knows me well knows that I'm not Mister Technology, I'm a, I'm I'm a pencil and paper kind of a guy. But when we have our Planning Commission meetings, what is kind of a, I don't wanna call it a problem, but what is kinda, we we've got our. Well, they're not here now, but we've all got a big notebook that's got, that's got all of the. Current things that are happening, it's about that thick of the, of the people that they're they're finding, or they're looking at their properties, or what Justin's doing. Um, the. And. Financial reports and pictures of properties and different things, and we're all kinda thumbing through, I asking what what page is that on? Pages, we're all thumbing through, and it's no fault of Mary's.
No matter how many tabs.
She puts tabs in to figure out where we're at. And and. This would help solve that problem.
You'd probably save a thousand dollars with the paper.
Well, over time, it would.
And I wanna add too, that I think that another nice thing would be that Mary could upload all the. Ordinate, like she gives us all flash drive of the ordinances, but it would be nice if we're looking at something to be able to also pull up the ordinance. And.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I I like the idea for us, but the question I would have is the Lenovo's. Were a lot, were half the price of the Samsung and somebody gonna see this in the future and they're gonna say, why did you guys ask about the Lenovo?
That's what I've got for real computers, Lenovo.
Uh, yeah, we use Lenovo. Lenovo is the same, they used to be, um, what was their name before that?
I mean, thinkpads.
Yeah, I am. Like, what's wrong with the Lenovo's? They're cheaper.
I just supplied the different options that the best.
Oh, yeah, what's wrong with the Lenovo's versus?
I'm just saying, the board was more favorable towards the Samsung ones.
I had recommended the Samsung, I saw that we'd get them for like ninety bucks cheaper. I also.
Cause they're two nineteen here.
And the nice thing about the Samsung is they don't tend to age out as quickly. With the software and stuff like that, as the Lenovo's do, that's just my experience, but. I I think they were both sixty four gigabytes, so as long as they've got the same memory. I I don't.
Yeah, because the one's thirty two gigabyte, and then the other one is sixty four with eleven inch screen.
I don't know, is Lenovo Android? I don't think it is Android.
No, it's not, it's it's Microsoft.
The other thing that I would be concerned about is uploading with thirty two. Again, the maps, the quality, one of the things that Mary had brought up is, you know, when we need to look at maps and stuff like that, it would. The images that she prints, we can't see anything on those, looking on that screen, we can't see anything, the better quality graphics. On the Samsung will make it easier.
But there's still graphics that you're doing, right? You're not watching video on these.
Not video, but we have to be able to zoom in on like the graphics, maps.
Thirty-two gigs.
If they've got, very normally using them here, we can have a thirty-two can access the files on the server.
Oh, well, then, yeah.
So what, what do the commissions approve how much sticks?
Up to three thousand dollars.
Somebody didn't make a motion that we.
I'll make the motion for the three thousand dollars per, per member, right?
I thought we had to add it all together. Up a second, all right, up to three thousand.
All right, we have, we have a motion by Cassie, second by Kate, for excessive commission recommendations by tablets for the planning mission of B Z A. All favor? Close, most carried. All right, Kathy? Cause we're getting by schedule. I know.
I'm bad loss.
It's not you.
It's not you, it's me.
What did the commissioner say about this before we even talk about it?
Um, that they were open to it.
What is it?
This is a proposal. Um, for having his company, um, look into, um, helping create a solar ordinance for the county. Um, they would also look into, um, the current projects that we have. And to see where like their shortcomings were and what we could do better.
I thought this would be hard, what's her name to do?
They're monitoring the project once a start. So yes, engineering, so they're just monitoring the work that's done. This, my understanding.
So what was, what is, oh, Bob, Bob doing then? If we're usually engineers.
He's not doing anything right now. He doesn't have a contract right now.
But on the, on the previous projects, though, Bob reviewed those, like there was a lot of review. Why would we pay somebody to review?
Can I say something to that real quick?
Yeah, one minute.
One minute. So Bob Lloyd, all he was doing was checking the list. I mean, he came out and he said it at a meeting. He said it at the drainage board meeting, said it at the planning commission. He was not actually looking to make sure that, you know, he was looking and saying, yes. According to their maps, seventy-five feet, we're good, check. Yes, this is in here, check. He wasn't doing any of the engineering studies and things like that on the soil compaction. My understanding of this project is. This company is, that's what they're gonna do. They're gonna come in, they'll look to see, okay, what are the environmental impacts? So Howard, you guys have talked about it before I was at the first meeting, so.
The way I understand it, Dave, to answer you more clearly, Roberta, you. Correct me if I'm wrong, please. Look, I think the first meeting that. He's not here, Commissioner Vandermark brought this up. This company would check our strengths and our weaknesses in our current ordinances. Am I right?
Not just solar, all of our ordinances?
Solar and battery. This company would go in, they would compare our strengths and our weaknesses. And tell us, okay, here's where you're wrong in this ordinance. Here's where this ordinance is strong, here's where this ordinance is weak, here's what you need to do to bring this ordinance. For the best interest of the county. That's the way I understood. This company to be more of a recommendation and to tell us our strengths and weaknesses and what, what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. In these, in this ordinance, ordinance is.
So Howard, could I ask you a question about that? If, if we cur, like, we already have three projects, they're already moving along. There's a moratorium, we're not sure if the grid can even take any more power. Why wouldn't we spend any money on this until we?
Yeah, and, and also, also, also something I see here that. I'm not saying I agree with it, I'm saying this is, that's how it was presented to the planning commission, because. This is not really a scope of work. This is just a point of what they do. One thing that sticks out in my mind, there's a big section about stormwater management. Well, all these things that are in here. That's up for, that's up for the contractors to do, not somebody. A private firm to do. Every, every, almost every one of those.
How do we not, the contractors doing?
Well, they should, they should be doing stormwater inspection reports, turning those in every week. Half-inch rain, they should turn it reported. Um, the best. They're the ones that should be doing that, okay? And along with the stormwater pollution prevention plan, they should take care of all that. All this stuff. I don't worry, we have California stormwater, we don't have California. I'm with Dave, I mean, I don't know why we're even talking.
I think we need, I think we need to put somebody that's legit with an independent, that's why I like this one.
Because, I mean, this, this is, this is the company that bought, what's their names in Walkerden?
Not care of either.
Huh?
That's Stan Tech, what?
Well, they have, their, their name is on the building now, I've dealt with them before.
Care of me that is, uh, his name is in, uh, their, their care me is out of, uh, you know.
Plus the moratorium, it's only a twelve-month moratorium. If, if and when it ends, we might be looking at more projects and we're gonna need to know the strengths of our ordinance.
There, I think, I was at the meeting this morning and this is a little different than what we said this morning. This morning, they said that. They wanted to get the idea of whether this company can come give a presentation. This wasn't a commitment.
To see if there's something.
I didn't want to go ahead and have them come. But there was no way to run it all, that.
We weren't gonna have.
Provide us with information.
I mean, if the commissioners, if they, if that's what the commissioners wanna see, that's fine, then the commissioners deny it, then we don't even need to talk about it.
Well, we, maybe we see what the commissioners, if this company comes and makes a presentation and they like what they hear, then we could also hear the presentation. Because it's gonna go to funding issues.
Yeah, cuz who's gonna?
We need to understand it.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, what is it, ten thousand dollars is this? It's not like it's eight hundred thousand dollars.
It kinda tells me what all they do. It's not just the ordinance. Um, it's in with the, the cost, there's a little paragraph. Again, I haven't had a chance to read all this, cause it just got put on me last week.
And once again, it always comes down to estimated fee, okay? So what's the, what's the not-to-exceed fee? You know, is like.
Which is what we want.
I, I think the idea of them.
Be wise to table this.
I don't think they need to do anything. Because she's not coming front of us asking for, for money or anything.
I, basically, I just, they're wanting to take your guys' temperature, see if this is something that you would even consider there.
Right, Mary should be the messenger for the board.
I, that, my thought on it is, the planning commission, like, we're not the experts for planning. If the planning commission said, hey, we're gonna write a new ordinance, and we need this. I think that would be the time we would say, you would wanna consider, I guess they could, you know, figure out if this is. I mean, ten thousand, I, I will agree, agree with Cassie in the grand scope, I think it isn't a lot of money, but. Ten thousand dollars would go a long way somewhere else in the county too, you know, I mean. Especially if we're not. If, if it's true that the grid can't take any more power.
Yeah, why even have the conversation?
We're never gonna, or, or it could be a long time before there's another, you know, or there could be some other type of alternative energy that comes along. I, I just don't know. I mean, obviously, I'm not saying I don't report, but support renewables, I'm not saying that, but right now, we've said. That there's a moratorium for twelve months. The grid can only handle so much power. You know, I, I realize a lot of these kinda companies are gonna come along and wanna make money off, you know, the sidebars off the projects. I mean, even the other thing that. We're having the work checked again by another company is, you know, is.
I think that's, that's, it's not our money, but I think that's a waste of money too. That's not right, so I guess we, we can, we could have, we could maybe entertain a motion to. Um, table it on a recommendation from the commissioners, don't move.
I'll second it.
Okay, but motion second, all favor? Motion carried. Okay, all right, Kathy, now it's your turn.
Hey, well, Kathy's coming up, could I just say something? I feel terrible, uh, Kelly Shepherd says, was, was put on. Was asked to be put on the agenda a month ago in a meeting of, no, 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 I just wanna say, I, I just. We owe him an apology because I think we letting that. So anyway, I just wanted to take.
You're, you're up next.
Kathy, that wasn't the point, I just think we.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving me, um, the ten minutes of your time tonight. Um, I would take, I tried to pass out copies of the Travel Indiana Magazine along for everybody to take a look at. And I did drop off a, a report that I had written and I wanna apologize in advance because I knew I was coming here today. And I wanted to email it to everybody in advance so they'd have time to read it. So last week I did the, um, executive summary. And then I just didn't get it done and realized I was coming here today, and so I finished it at nine-thirty last night. So my apologies for, I just plopping it in front of you, I'm not giving you a real good opportunity to read that. Um, I'm here with the C V C, which is the Stark County Convention of Visitors Commission. And I wanted to give you a report of our activities and financial disbursements for the last four years. Ending, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Um, I started on this board on January twenty-twenty-one, this is my fifth year. This is my last year, um, my appointment expires the end of the year and I don't intend to redo it. Um, I, um, I, and I informed my board of that, informed the commissioners this morning, I wasn't going to. Um, and so I'm telling you all, um, because I really do wanna be an old lady and just retire.
I watched it on YouTube, I think you said, I think I'm not gonna.
I think you said you were, you said you were gonna do it again, so I heard, I don't.
No, I actually said, I, I don't think I'm going to, I'm not sure why.
Oh, well. Just a little miss, miss, misstumble there, but I, it is an important board and, and. Because there's, there's more and more money being involved here. Um, when I started in, on January first of twenty-twenty-one, let me, let me go back, um, the C V C was created by. Uh, the county council in two thousand seven. And that's when they ad- adopted the innkeeper tax and I spelled out the Indiana code for that. Um, it, and that ordinance, which I did forward on to Justin and I've got a copy of it, if the rest of you would like to see that, I got it from Mike Blaine. So it's available to you easily. Um, it outlined the tax rate, which was five percent and that was the maximum then, that remains the maximum rate. Um, and, uh, it requests the treasurer to establish a fund named the Stark County Convention of Visitors and Tourism Promotion Fund. And all monies collected have to be deposited to that fund and the only thing that this, these funds can be spent on. Is, uh, solely for the purpose of promoting and encouraging conventions, visitors and tourism within the county. Now, I will tell you, initially, they, um. It was a self-reporting mechanism, so for those first, uh, twelve, thirteen years or so. There wasn't a lot of money there. Um, I think the, the best they ever did one year was ten thousand or twelve thousand, something like that. And you may remember, Dave, I can't remember for sure exactly, but that's my recollection. Um, well, about the time we came on, this new. Board came on, uh, uh, appointed by the Stark County Commissioners. Um, the state had passed a law that required the national B and Bs that advertise within the state of Indiana. And the vendors hooked up with to advertise their properties, they had to collect the tax for each county. And pay it to the state of Indiana and then the state of Indiana paid it to the counties. Well, our, uh, collections went up exponentially when that transpired. So we went from about ten or twelve thousand dollars to, uh, seventy-eight thousand dollars we collected last year. Uh, but I'll, I'll get to that as well. Um, we've had six consistent members on, it's a nine-member board. Um, and we've had six consistent members, myself, Mayor Eastock, Earl Henry, Mary Perrin, Joanne Bailey, and Bertadette Manuel. We currently have two vacancies on our board, uh, that have not been filled. And I will tell you, it has been difficult often over the course of the last four years to get enough people to come to the meeting to get a quorum. So one of the things we requested the commissioners to consider, uh, we voted on this last year to approach the commissioners about this. And it was unanimous to reduce the number of the board from nine members to seven. We consistently easily get four members there, but sometimes that fifth member to have a quorum is, is difficult. We have to call people to come and we have to wait till they come or we cancel the meeting. So, um, they're looking into that, Justin, uh, is gonna give them an opinion on that. And, uh, so hopefully we can do that and this would be a good time to do that. The first two years, um, we did not operate with a budget approved by the county council. Um, and that's how they had done it in the years prior, uh, the money was there for them to spend and spend it, they did. Well, I did not want, and our board did not want to just spend all the money. We wanted to try to save some, we wanted money to get into the community, but we also wanted to save back money for a large project, should anything happen to come along. So we followed the Stark County Community Foundation's, uh, approach to funding, which is the average of twelve rolling quarters. Uh, in, in the beginning, and that was for the first two years and then the last two years, we did have a budget from the county council. There are a couple of things that we needed some assistance with to manage this board more efficiently. And one is to reduce the board members, which the commissioners are looking at. And the other thing, and I, I did not go over this very extensively in the commissioner meeting this morning. Um, but there's been some interest in having someone to help with the secretarial things, the minutes, the claims, the website maintenance, Facebook maintenance. Advertising copy, et cetera, et cetera. We're all volunteers, we don't get paid and by law, we cannot be paid. Which is fine, I mean, I didn't do it, cause I wanted to get paid and I certainly don't need whatever little amount they, they give out for some of these boards. But we wanted to initiate especially for. Future boards, cause I'm, I have, I think a couple of my other members might, they've been on it for five years too and I think they would like to look at giving it up. So for future boards, we'd like to initiate dialogue with commissioners and council about the possibility of getting some sort of assistance. For example, I've got a collection of our minutes right now, but you guys don't have them. So if the state board of accounts comes down here and wants to audit our books. That's on file here, but our minutes that support our expenditures, et cetera, et cetera, float around among us with, which, with is not. Necessarily the best way to keep those minutes.
Do you record them?
We don't that, no. But that's a good idea, as long as we don't have to pay for it.
Just in case you get audited.
That's, that's a good idea, we could do that, but, um, this year we've got Joanne Bailey, uh, being our treasurer, or their secretary. And that is a tough spot to get our board members to agree to take is that, uh, secretary spot where they gotta take the minutes and get them out and everything.
Just real quick, Kathy, will, will their board have to be recorded as well?
Are you subject to O D L? Do you post forty-eight hours in advance?
Yes, we do. I don't know if we are required to, but I figured as a, a, a committee appointed by the county commissioners, we're subject to the same rules as everybody else, so we do.
If you self-impose that on yourself, you'll probably have to start recording it.
Yeah, okay, when you say recording, you just mean in the reporter's office now?
No, no, like YouTube, like this.
Well, now, see, that would be even more difficult, I don't know how to manage that and, uh, I, so I'm not gonna, you know, and, and I didn't wanna manage that. And I said, we're not doing none of that business because I don't know how to do it. So, and nobody else on my board knows how to do it. And one time we booked this room and then nobody showed up to let us in, they got, it was July and it was warmout, so we sat at the picnic table in case anybody came, so.
You're in luck, you can use your cell phone to do it.
Um, well.
Yeah.
That's beyond my scope and capabilities, I'm telling you right now, so, uh, that's a problem for us, so. I'm just telling you, I'm being honest, that's a problem. Another reason why you might wanna give us somebody to work with us. So we do need to initiate that, uh, discussion with you guys. Um, so then what I did on, that's just kinda the executive summary, so I just broke down a little bit, something that we did each year and what our expenditures were. So in twenty-twenty-one, every year we have done something new or added something. For example, the first year, we developed an application for those funds, so that people could fill it out and say what they wanted to use it for. Who was on their board, what kind of funds did they have, you know, et cetera, et cetera, and actually I used the community foundations application and modified it to, to suit us. Um, we wrote out press releases that year and, and put them in the newspaper and in the, uh, on the radio. Um. Uh, to attract people who might want, want to apply for those funds. And, uh, we sent out emails to all the festivals that we were aware of. And, uh, so we ended up that year, we had a carryover twenty-eight thousand one hundred, or twenty-eight thousand nineteen dollars and forty cents. We received forty-eight thousand dollars that year and we made fifteen thousand eight hundred seventy dollars in expenditures, which was part of the twelve rolling quarters. And most of that was for, uh, went to the festivals, some of it went to advertising, we initiated, we started advertising in this. Book that comes out every year, uh, we initiate, initially started out with a half-page ad, last year we had a full page. book that comes out every year. Uh, we initiate, initially started out with a half-page ad. Last year we had a full-page ad in there, so you can get these anywhere. Um, and, and we linked it all back to the festivals. The other thing that we did was we offered a subsidy to the festivals because most, a lot of them, you know, they, you know, they don't have a lot of money. So they would have little bitty ads like this in here, which does not stand out at all. So we offered, if they would double the size of their ad, which was like a six hundred dollar ad, we would pay three hundred towards it. And so we paid three hundred, they paid three hundred or whatever. And we have done that every year since then. So that gave them the opportunity, had bigger, brighter ads. And we hooked them all back into the ones that we, we've put in here. We call these grants, but they're not really grants. It's just a distribution of money, but. Who is that guy?
That's the guy with Jesse.
Is that real, buddy? It's a left car, right? Um, in two thousand twenty-two.
I thought it was, I, I thought it had something to do with festivities for when I first saw it too, so don't feel bad.
Oh, it's a real guy?
It is, yeah. He's not here, he's on, he's on there, but I thought it was same time for today.
Two five, two thousand twenty.
Okay.
Two thousand twenty-two. Um, we continued to, to disperse money on the twelve rolling quarter, uh, average. In the twelve rolling quarter average. However, that year we, at the end of the year, we did elect to spend some additional funds. We gave fifteen thousand dollars to the ci- city of Knox for a kayak launch in their park, in the park here that was part of the Blue Trail. And we gave to Stark County Park Board fifteen thousand dollars, which ultimately ended up getting built down at, at the end of the trail. But it was all based off of the, the uh, Blue, Blue Trail. So that year, we continued what we, in that, that year, we also developed a um, uh, a final report where these festivals had to get back with us and tell us what they spent their money on. Um, how much this cost, how much, what did, what was the um tourists, the, you know, the number of people that came through your facility or your, your festival or whatever. And um, uh, that way we had some documentation as to how they actually spent that grant. Um, and I'm wondering about that too, because I don't necessarily keep those. Are those something that need to be recorded in the reporter's office or where do we do it? Because I have not kept them all. Just food for thought there. You can let me know later. Um, that year we had a carryover of sixty thousand dollars. We had fifty thousand in receipts and we spent fifty thousand that year. In two thousand twenty-three, we did begin the year with a council-approved budget of forty thousand dollars. Uh, and we looked at what we had been spending, so we tried to keep it around that, what we had been spending in kind of neighborhood and allow that fund to continue to build. Um, this year, uh, we gave um, an educational session to all of the festivals in conjunction with the um, uh, Indiana, Indiana Festivals Association, which provide this. And Mary Perrin and um Earl Henry took that on as a project. They developed this notebook that was given to everybody. And in here, what included things like how to advertise, how to put together an appropriate ad, or what makes a good ad for um, and um vendors, different vendors that you might want to have at your festival. It was uh, marketing opportunities. It was really a good seminar and it was well-attended, not only by the festivals. If, if you can look that if you want, but I want it back, so. Just passing whatever. Um, um, and it, so that was something that, that we gave an additional benefit to the festivals here locally. Uh, we continued offering the grants and then we started also advertising in Travel Indiana, which I think that uh, I tried to pass some of those out on, on there, on the table for you all. And if you'd like to receive copies of these, they're free. So if you want to email me your address, I'll pass it on to Mary Perrin and she'll make sure that you get on the list to get a free copy.
Do they have a website where they put it all electronically too, or?
No, that's a good question.
I really think so, right?
Probably. This is a, this uh, but most of this, I don't know.
Travelindiana.com.
Yes, I'm sure they do. Then you can take a look at that, but.
Yeah, right here is Stark County, Northern Region.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we, not only do we put ads in there, but we've put articles in about, one of them was planes, trains and automobiles. So we, Mary wrote an article uh and submitted it about um, the Hoosier Valley Railroad. Um, about the airport, several things that would encourage people to come to Stark County and, and visit. Uh, so we've been very, very lucky. As it's been uh more and more known, we also started getting more and more requests for money. So that year we also added the Stark County Library and Prairie Trails Group uh to a list of our grantees that we had given. In two thousand twenty-four, which was just this past year, we started out with a budget of forty thousand dollars and we'd be, continued all those things. Now, we had a police foot page that Mary and Earl worked on. But Earl worked then after that on a website. So we are just now getting our website off the ground. It has copies of our applications, copies of our final reports uh that they can just download and send to us. And we can put announcements on there when we are accepting applications for those things. Um, we also transferred another ten thousand to the Stark County Park Board for the construction of their first kayak launch. So the total that we gave them for their kayak launch was thirty thousand dollars. But so the one at uh English Lake was, was fair amount more than that. Um, we gave them thirty thousand. The Community Foundation gave them five thousand. And the Kankakee River, Yellow River Basin Commission paid the rest of that. And they are funding the one at State Road twenty-three for us as well. And I have to um tell you, Bill Kreis was very instrumental in helping us get those funds. So uh, we are very excited about that.
Kathy, what does the library do with the funds that you give them?
They had um, uh, two years in a row, they had um, uh, authors, an authors conference where they brought the authors down and then they brought, I mean, it was very big. I was shocked at how many people that were there. And there were people from out of the county down there too.
Oh, I wonder if that's all with books or something.
Yes, yes. It was in September of the last two years, so it was really good. Now, I do want to make sure, I want to be uh very point-blank and uh direct and honest about this. Um, our carryover from the prior year was ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars. Our receipts for the year was seventy-eight thousand. And we spent forty-two thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty cents in our operating budget approved by the council was only forty thousand. So we overspent. So I don't know what to do about that since we overspent it, number one. Number two, if you ask how did that happen, it was because I frankly didn't pay good enough attention. I knew we were getting close.
You're not allowed to encumber on your, on this?
Well, if I know, we could, but we didn't. Why would we encumber? We overspent it. We, what we would have, we, we, we didn't have the money to encumber because we spent too much of it.
You've already paid, you've already paid all the bills too?
Yeah, yep, they're all paid. So, but all that money in that pot, just though, you know, it's only for our use anyway. So I don't know. The commissioner said, didn't know what to do about that. So they said, check with the council and see what she would like us to do about that. We did have a lengthy conversation about, in fact, Todd happened to be there at our meeting um, about the importance of not going over your budget and that we could have and should have if that's, we either withheld until after the first of the year because it was right at the very end of the year that this happened. Or, or that we should have gone to the council for it, you know, I don't know, how additional appropriation or is that a transfer or what is that?
Trying to think of how your budget was set up originally though, like we can just draw from this year.
Well, you could do that too, but I tell you right now, I um, I'll be very honest with you. I'm gonna be back here before the end of the year.
That would be better though than trying to do something retroactive. You know what I'm saying? That's just always.
However, whatever you guys want us to do, we'll do. Um, and we will make every effort to make sure that that doesn't happen again. Um, we'll pay a lot better attention. We should have.
It would matter if anybody happens to look at that fund.
Yeah, it's two thousand over, so.
Yeah, but they're all.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean somebody's gonna look at it.
Well, I, you know, I, I had heard the council, you know, have basically tell every, you can't go over your budget. And of course then we did and I said, well, now we're gonna have to go and we're gonna have to admit.
You did it before, okay.
Well, me, I did not go over my budget before.
No, you did it before we made that statement.
Oh, okay. Yes, that's true.
You're grand, you're, you're, yeah, you're grand, you're grandmother.
Big name branches are good. So um, anyway, I will tell you that uh, uh, this year, we have forty thousand this year too that we're working on. And I know we're gonna go over because right off the bat, we gave fifteen thousand dollars at our last meeting, which was in February to the city of Knox. Because we felt like since we had given, and he doesn't have enough money to do his either. And since we had given the county thirty thousand dollars towards their kayak launch, we wanted to give the city thirty thousand towards there. So we'd already given them fifteen, so we've given them another fifteen. That's first of all. Second of all, we've had a cut, uh, we're gonna fund the car.
The hot rod power tour.
Yes.
Steve and I are both involved in that.
Which we did not have budgeted. And I know the park board wants to do a Jimmy Buffett concert or tribute concert or whatever, so.
So let me just ask you, I, I realize what you're saying is you don't want to reduce your budget by twenty-seven, forty-nine this year.
No.
But do you, but what if you collect, what if you collect a lot more this year too? Is there any possibility of that, that you might just actually receive more in, more revenue this year?
Well, I, I kind of looked ahead at that. And I thought, if we only spend the forty thousand, we, and we have the amount to carry over because I don't remember what it was right off the top of my head. With, right now I think we have a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in our account. So um, we have that. We collect another eighty thousand because that's about what we collect. It was seventy-eight something here. Um, if we collect that much now, I don't know, you know, with.
Because it's kind of like the park board's budget, the way your budget works, is what I'm saying.
But if we only spend the forty, then we're gonna be up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the kitty. So we want to spend some of that money this year on big projects. So um, that's why in the, what you guys are talking about with the cars, I think that's a once-in-a-lifetime thing that would be very exciting.
It's definitely a once-in-a-lifetime.
So um, yeah, it's very, very big. So we agreed to fund that. And then um, like I say, you know, bring in a, a Jimmy Buffett tribute band to the Bass Lake Beach, I think would be a, exciting too. For, and that will cost us less than five thousand dollars.
My question for you would be though, is it, would it be more um prudent though, just to let it ride for this year, take your care, you know, carry it into this year and then do the additional appropriation this year for what you need out of your fund?
That, however.
You figure out what you're gonna be doing.
Yes, that, if, if that's what you, yes, that would probably be easier. So when I come, because I can, I know I'm gonna be here before the end of the year. Sometime this summer probably to, uh, to, to take a look at that.
Right.
Um.
Because you have the money there.
Yes, yes.
Right.
Yes, and we don't bring any tourists in if we don't spend the money. So uh, uh, we've done a good job of building that fund balance up, but you know, there are some exciting things coming up. So I do want to see us spend some of that money and put, you know, get that into Stark County and get some of that.
That Jimmy Buffett band out at the, out at the uh, beach would be a great group.
Even though I only do it for the stupid.
Well, well, he's dead, but.
Oh, really? I don't even know. I don't know.
Oh, my goodness.
I think Todd's hinting that Metallica band would.
Yeah, I was thinking Metallica.
Anyway, are there any questions for me? And again, I apologize for getting this to you on that spot.
That's fine.
And you, and I also would suggest you, you might want to have some of your other boards come and give you a report from kind of timeline, what they're doing and how they spend their.
They only get ten minutes on like years.
I was, you were older anyways.
Fourteen minutes. I gotta say that one thing about Jimmy, he sure puts on a big meal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Hello, Mr. Shepherd.
There. The sheriff's not gonna be here and I'll explain real, really, play for the Y at the end in like one minute, not thirty like to. Go ahead. Good, thank you. Thanks for your time tonight. Um, Jim Hernandes here with me. Jim representing skill. Um, me representing a lot of entities. So let me name those real quick. I will be efficient because I believe all of you have heard or been a part of some part of this big idea. Maybe with the exception of Howard. I don't know if you were in the audience when I presented to the commissioners that night.
No, but I was here, you were here and spoke to the council.
That's what I meant. I'm sorry, to the council. So.
Yeah, I did hear that.
So everybody's, because I believe I was there that evening as well. So I'll be efficient. But I'm here representing three schools in Stark County. So high school students' graduation pathways, which are um, set to change for this current year's seventh graders. Uh, that's a good thing. The pendulum has swung more towards vocational programming. So we are looking for different pathways to get kids graduating. At the same time, I am the skill board president, so I'm representing adult education, which we all know we need in this county as well. Um, I am on the CDF board, so, and then nested under that, I am part of the workforce development subcommittee. So all of those things together, for me, I can't keep them straight, but the nice thing is they all come back and point to education. So um, Jim and I have crossed the state, uh, along with Dave Howells, traveled with us. Um, state line to state line, looking at programs. Uh, electrical instruction for kids, be that in some instances union, some instances non-union, but verified curriculum for electricians, and that's the one handout that we have. We've had a successful meeting with bricklayers and masons, uh, and gotten curriculum from them. So some of these offerings are adult-oriented, some are student-high school-oriented, some are combined both, some can hit on both. So what it comes down to is if we can get a space available, we can get those two that I just named, we could get off and running next year. Masons, bricklayers, a pathway for students. Um, and then electricians, uh, training, a pathway in adult education. Uh, so that's essentially what we're looking for is in some manner, um, some funding partnership. We, in our meetings, workforce development, you know, we've been, we've spent last six months trying to figure out a space to do these things. And we've looked all across the county and many of you have been involved with that as well. I know we all cross each other's paths on these boards. Um, so some of you know, a, a couple of you were able to attend the big meeting we had at the big building in North Johnson, the old Thermos Building. And that is the grand idea because with that opportunity, if it were possible, you quickly get well beyond just electricians and bricklayers, masons.
That's the most turnkey one that you've found in the county, correct?
Yes, and well, it's the most turnkey in some respects, but it's probably also the, the taller order on getting it student-ready. But it's that upside potential for that, that there's really anything we can think of that can be offered as far as curriculum, we could house it there. So in that regard, I totally agree. Plus it's on thirteen acres. It opens up a lot of outside pathways like heavy machinery. It could be a big sandbox for that sort of thing. Um, that's one idea. Then the other idea that we've talked about is on the property that currently is skill, there's room to put in a new building that could house two or three um vocational pathways. Or maybe it's multiple buildings that could house individual programs uh, on that property that could possibly be new. Um, some of the other current, uh, existing building ideas we've had have either old or, or off the market or just weren't viable. So that is what we're collectively chasing. Like I, to repeat it, from a, to benefit the three county schools, to benefit workforce development. Uh, as I've gotten the history lessons from Bruce, I mean, that's what skill came about, adult education in this county decades ago. And we're, so we're trying to find a way to not continue to be stagnant on all of those things. And, you know, obviously with what I do, I think education is the place to start and build from there. And that can hit on a lot of things. We develop a workforce. Maybe that keeps a workforce in the county. Maybe that leads to building houses. That leads to increased enrollment for the schools. All of that is economic development.
Ballpark, like what it would cost for each one of those projects?
So the big building in North Johnson, we would need, uh, I say we in that regard, NJSP School would need a partner to the tune of at least one point five million uh, for my board to have a conversation, a serious.
What's the investment from your? What's the investment from your 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 board?
Then we would, that would still leave us around a millions.
So, okay.
Yeah, yep. And then, but now obviously the smaller pole barn type of buildings here uh on the skilled campus. Would could be a lot less than that, um and we are currently working to. Dave Howell.
Yeah, probably around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per building.
And looking at two.
Looking at two.
So is the existing skill building, building, is that completely utilized?
It is.
Exact capacity. It is, yeah, so uh the automotive with adult and students right now, that building is is that capacity.
And it's uh ten thousand. Eight hundred square feet, so.
So the idea though, you know, i- if this was in North Johnson, the idea would be that the county and the North Justin schools could be partners on the property. Partnership as owners possibly.
Yeah, I'm, I don't, I haven't gone so far as to figure out how that.
Just wonder how that works, I mean.
Right.
I just wonder, is the county able to own a piece of property like that and possibly lease it to North Justin's school or the county schools? And and skill or something like that, but I mean thirteen acres. And a and a building like that, I just wonder if that's an opportunity too where we're just. Latterly involved.
When you, when you think about that building over there, you think about, well, that's not very centrally located. But when you take a look at at the uh opportunities that we have in Grove.
Yes.
If you take a a radius from that point. Of course, Oregon Davis would probably have the farthest to go, but if you take that and go out that direction, that's where the growth's at.
So just so you understand, we we are part of, we are in an eight school vocational cooperative. Okay, and that's the Marshall County Schools. And then us and Culver uh leans more with us. So yes, you you are right. The nice thing, I've talked with our new CTE director. We basically have two hubs, Plymouth and Knox are our two hubs, so kids from John Glenn, LaVille. Brighton, Argus, Plymouth, Culver, and the three Stark County Schools. Come to Knox for some programming, come to Plymouth for some programming. What lends itself nice to that North Johnson spot? Is I've been trying to recruit other schools to come to us, so South Central, straight north of us, Tri Township. And then both Palasguy County Schools. I also see opportunities with. Hank Key Valley, those students, especially if they live in the wheat field area, they travel.
Yeah, it doesn't try that easy.
So we can do MOUs and bring other students into us, grow our cooperative enrollment and therefore grow the dollars as well. So then, yeah, we're we're hitting on the county workforce development, but we're hitting a general area. Which also saturates what we all need as well.
And we're you, we're in a situation where Marshall County is kinda doing more of their own thing.
That's correct.
So if we had, if for us to be competitive.
That's right.
We could, we could be that same situation over there. And draw in smaller schools.
Yeah, and didn't, and didn't Knox take on some of their own stuff as well, that what there was at the skill?
That's right, Knox took on the welding.
Yeah, the welding, yeah.
Yep. But we still have adult welding at skill, right?
I'm sorry?
Is there, but there's still adult welding.
There is adult welding, yes, yeah. But so now that takes place at the school, but that's under.
Or it takes place in the school, not at skill.
No, it's in the welding lab at the.
So all the welding is at the Knox school, even what's run through skill.
That's correct.
But I mean, a- and looking at the grand scheme of things though, like you, so you'd have some things in Knox, we have some things at Knox skill, I mean. Like this would be focused on like bridge lane, electrical, certain things like building and trades, maybe some things in North Johnson. Doesn't mean that in the future, we couldn't fund something that is in Oregon Davis area, you know, like. And I agree with Bruce, since since Marshall County has something there, it does make sense to move more that direction to help the other schools.
That's right.
Cooperative.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the big short part we have in Stark County is affordable housing. Uh I could foresee a built, building trade. Program over there, we've got a lot of people out and around that have a lot of expertise that we could call on.
That's right.
To help us do these things and I don't know, do we take, we we might even have the ability to take it to a collegiate level?
Well, there's lots of credential pathways to get to. Let me tell you what the two of us saw, when we traveled over to Fort Wayne, we saw their vocational, what they did in downtown Fort Wayne. Two blocks over from their central administration office, they bought a warehouse. I'm gonna say thirty or forty thousand square feet. This building in North Johnson is seventy three thousand square feet.
Nice.
But they bought thirty or forty thousand square feet and they started their programs five years ago and they went in with their kids. Electrical, construction, HVAC, plumbing. And civil engineering. And they did, they did the work. They set, they set the place up.
Oh, I got you. That might be some of what could go on there.
Yeah, that when we talk to these programs, there is a lot of, hey, if you get the space. We bring a lot of sweat equity donation to bear and they they have a lot of good relationships with your big box stores. Your Home Depots, Menards, Lowe's, those types of things.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that building is an awesome building.
It is.
But the only downfall I see is the sheer size of it. I mean, maintaining that building, the utilities have to be twenty, thirty thousand dollars a month.
Right.
Now, that could be, that could be.
Cause that, and I mean, I'm thinking go kart track is what I'm thinking. I mean, that is, that's a really amazing building.
In true terms of supporting economic development though, I mean, North Johnson. I mean, you can see that they're just doing a lot with the talent in North Johnson, but the thing is, is that. If we purchase that as a county, creating a Stark County incubator there, we could lease, we could lease it. You know, to the school, but maybe there's other things to your point that might be interested in moving out there, but in collaboration with the schools and skill. I I don't know what they are, but like Bruce said, maybe construction and.
Well, and and in essence, it's no different than what we originally started out with. I believe the building you're at, we actually set up machines so we could train people. That would be suitable for MPI, is that correct?
Hmm, well, I think that will remain.
And and others, but if you wanna train up people for this county, you give them the ability, maybe it's not a machine. But it's a course and uh I I I I I'm gonna be historical and then I'll get hysterical. As a young man on a county council, I was the only Republican on that council, I'm not getting politics involved. I was, uh Jack Bell tries to claim this, but I broke the tie for the collection of the added tax, reason being. I had a guy by the name of Dave Wallsmith come out to the farm and he said, Bruce, you know, you're at an advantage, your son could stay on the farm. Or he could do this, or he could do that. My sons have nothing in Stark County. And I I'm passionate about skill. I think about our jail system out there and and doing a a jail ministry for almost twenty years, dealing with three and four different generations. You wanna improve Stark County, we come up with a good, strong program, we get them out of the jails, we get their lives turned around. And the problem with vocational, the way I see it, when I was in school, I, you know, I stood in, I sat in the corner with a dunset. Cause I didn't know how to behave, but those are your vocational people. Those are the people that you can grab a hold of and give them that attention, we can make a lot of changes.
Well, that's the other thing, what we know is we can, we can't get them all to listen to us by the age of eighteen, no. But we stay connected to them and we can get them to buy in and they're. We can still get them somewhere.
Yeah, there's um wire that I handed out to you, we went to this, this organization on Friday. And it's a four year uh electoral petition that we could bring to the county.
From them though, like if the county, let's just say, let's say if the county bought it and we partnered. Do we have a commitment from these, both of these folks to say, hey, if you, if you build it, we will come?
That the, they wanna come this direction real bad, they're trying to move from Illinois all the way to Ohio, so they're looking for their next. To get from Cedar Lake, they've got a commitment to come to us, same with Masons and Bricklayers, they are into forty nine schools now. We have a commitment from them, if I can give them the go ahead, we could get both of those started for next fall.
You know, I I think it's great that we have space at skill two for the future to expand, cause we're gonna need to teach people how to do things here to grow a workforce here, but. I just, I don't think you're gonna build a building like that one in Johnson, to Todd's point, you know, you know, for a hundred dollars a square foot, that's finished, that's probably four hundred dollars.
What is the cost of that building if we're, if it was gonna be purchased today?
I can tell you, that's a great question, I have a decent answer. Um two school systems in Fort Wayne are building a CTE program. Northwest Allen County Schools are looking at a sixty thousand square foot center and it's twenty eight million dollars is what they're looking at.
How big, how big is that building?
The way that building sits right now, what could it be bought for, do we know?
Three point one.
She's looking at three, she's still holding around, trying to get three million, but she wants two million upfront. And then she's willing to do a payment structure. She's leaving everything, it's got a turnkey, also graphics, turnkey graphics program ready to go.
I mean, I think it's a great idea, but it's gonna take a minute for us to figure out how we're gonna do this.
He talks about using solar money for infrastructure, this is the same sort of foundational thing, but it not a physical infrastructure. Issue, but like foundations of culture, society, civilization, so I think I feel like it's an important.
I can tell you, so uh Wednesday, I I so I had Performance Services Incorporated. Is a educational builder, they just finished uh doing a building. They converted, it was, at one time it was an Aldi building, it was Brown Mackey College in Michigan City. They converted that for the Michigan City Schools into a CTE recently. Uh they've come down, a week and a half ago, I took them out to the building. So they are looking at a few options for me, but they're gonna give me some information on Wednesday in regards to this big. Seventy three thousand square feet.
Here's the thing, here's some grants. Well, here's, here's the other thing too, is like on the other end of it, I mean, just to get the party started, I agree with Cassie, this is the kind of thing that you would fund in solar. Now, the thing is, is that we don't talk about this a lot, but we're very bondable as a county, you know, we're grade A. But we also have the income, we have guaranteed income now, I mean, these projects, two projects are built. So we're bondable, so one option is that you could bond it. But I mean, we could pay for it in five years, I mean, easily, I mean, and still have a, you know, a lot of that money, we're taking in two million dollars a year. This other project, like we haven't got an EDA, I'm gonna bring this up at the end, but. That'd be another million dollars on the other one, that'd be three million. I mean, like this leaves a lot of money to fund other things too, if we bonded a project like this and you know. Uh the only problem is, is to sell the bond, you're gonna wanna borrow a little bit too, and so I mean, if we're only borrowing three million. I, you know, I don't know how attractive that would be, but it's something we could get a question, a question answered from bond council pretty quick to say, hey. What if we wanted to borrow three million bucks? We're gonna partner with the schools, I mean, and then in the meantime, we could kinda look at, cause the other thing is. Obviously, we have the issue with the smoke shop that we haven't resolved, we, we'd be owning a piece of property, we would have to charge a fair market lease on it. I I just believe from our previous discovery, you know, that we would have to do that, but I just.
I I'm not so sure, Dave, Justin, Justin, we would probably almost have to own the building.
Yeah, I would say we own it, lease it to them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I I don't know what your general obligation bonding capacity is, uh but I I.
What I figure, one or the other of us.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know, both can, but one or the other.
Yeah, cause I'm a little bothered figuring out a way to give, you know, a million and a half dollars or two million and that's not.
Thirteen acres in North Johnson for the future, I mean, you know, like, let's face it, North Johnson is kinda more geared a lot to like housing and things like that. Instead of industrial, we're talking about industrial, commercial towards thirty, like it's it's kind of a perfect fit from that perspective. Um but the other thing is, maybe these folks, like that, when these people get involved, they're probably gonna help with some of the lease payments, you know, like. There's gonna be a draw that's gonna help with that, so.
I've had one meeting with Center for Workforce Innovation out of Almerazo and I, they, that's one of the avenues. To a lot of grants and funding.
Kelly, do we have an idea of? How turnkey it is right now, what what, how much more, you know, we're talking three, three point one million?
Right.
How how much more is it gonna cost to have it ready to do what we want it to do?
That's what I'm hoping to find a little bit out on Wednesday of this week, get some feedback from this company.
Right, good.
Who have been through it, a engineer.
Good.
And so I I can report back on that, send you some of the.
Yeah, you know, the idea of the extra thirteen thou, I'm sorry, the extra thirteen acres. You could expand into heavy equipment operating, you could even uh. The the opportunities for, the opportunities for further education just doesn't stop there.
Right, so whatever we can think of.
Kelly just said there was a lien on that property.
Yeah.
They're still getting. The other thing is too, that the foundation's right now is spending about two thousand dollars. So you know, there there are a lot of avenues.
Right. And and the, and the, and the only unfortunate thing about this is like I told man that day, is something like this is a super great idea. But we cannot make this all happen like in a month.
No, I mean, we would have, we would have to, we'd have to borrow something.
We have to borrow something, hearings, we'd have to figure out some, some way to do this, we have all these memos of understanding with everybody. Who's gonna pay the rent for, who's gonna maintain this, who's gonna do that?
But if she's willing to take a down payment, like we may be gonna negotiate this, it sounds like you've already talked to her. I have talked to her, yeah. So like, you know, we've got a, a pretty nice nest egg with the rainy day fund that we can pay back with. With, with the money once it's bonded, something like that.
How about the other funds?
Well, it could be a combination with that too, but I mean, there is money in the county that we can get.
That I don't wanna spend a lot of solar money, like to save it back, but boy. This would be that kind of investment.
Right, investment.
Yeah, I would rather see, I would rather see them go towards this too.
Very good.
Sounds like we're warm in other projects like this, you know what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, but I'm, I do what I'm saying, I I always thought, well, I wouldn't wanna spend all that money, but so if we're gonna save, try to save half of it, let's, let's move that. Over that way, making it just like. Yeah, I think we'd have done a lot better years ago, letting somebody else.
So, so with 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 all this conversation we've had, um. I think that it would be to our benefit that. I don't know what kind of committee you have for this or whatever, but I feel there should be a few members of this council. That should meet, not to represent us, but to bring back information and give ideas. I mean, I just, I'm, I'm not doing that to try to micromanage. Any means, by any means, because I'm not a very good micromanager.
We can make this work.
Yeah.
If we, you know, and if it's meant to be, it's meant to be, that lady's not gonna sell that building overnight, is she?
Well, you available nine AM Wednesday morning?
Just as long for the financial soundness doesn't start to accelerate things, because the the advertising business has been tough for them since COVID.
She has sent a couple bills now, but that's the thing is to still trying to figure out how much of the building is currently used, which we talked about.
Exactly.
But I will bounce those um emails on to you guys.
I think it's a super idea if we can just make it.
Then if I have a little more notice.
Sure, sure.
I accept Visa and MasterCard.
Alright.
I did discover.
So you're connected. So, so we're going in the right direction, I mean, I think so, cause I'm sure we're gonna have to have public. Connect with my email.
Yeah, if you're gonna, if you're gonna wanna.
Bond.
I'll wait to hear from you guys, what you wanna do with it, but your first step would be if you seriously wanna look at bond financing is to get bond counsel and uh. Somebody like Baker Tilly involved and, you know, I've done a couple dozen bonding, so it wouldn't be difficult, I just, I wanna hear from you guys. If you're interested, what you wanna do and I can hook you up with the right people, so.
Well, I thi- I think, I I don't know if we need to motion do it, but I think we need to at least move forward, at least look at that.
We need to do research for sure.
I mean.
Yeah, well, first thing, what I find, what I hear from our guys Wednesday, I'll email you guys.
Kelly?
It has a federal tax lien on it for sure, and there may be more than one, Mandy just informed me and she said she will check it in the morning and get back.
Did you get us that information, Kelly, please? And I don't know, if if there's a lot of interest across the council here, uh as long as we don't have three people at at a meeting at one time, I mean, we can.
Three, just not four. As long, as long as we have two weeks in a row, so they become serial, right?
You know.
Yeah.
I get bullied.
Okay, um I will, I'll get an email out to you guys after my Wednesday morning meeting, just to see what I get from them. And we'll.
Well, I mean, has your, has this, your school group, have they ever? Well, I mean, has your, has this, your school group, have they ever talked about, like, you think they would be willing for us to own the building and. You know, and, and you guys lease it?
Well, I think that's honestly, that's a conversation I go back with. I have a board meeting tomorrow night, so. I mean, working out good on that.
And in comparison, like even when we, when we initially started talking to the fair board, even like we, we wanna do some big things and so we talked about owning. Property to, to spend more money on, that kinda thing, so.
Well, we've, I mean, the, the school corporation is probably not gonna buy the building.
No, no, this would, hence why I'm.
Yeah.
Here after you guys.
Right, but that, that money can go towards the developing the project, you know, it'd be better not to spend all your money.
That's right.
On that and have that for, you know, improvements.
Right, but then we, yeah, the, the, the committee thing, to that point, if you own it. It's gonna need conversations with Knox, North Judson and Oregon Davis and lease agreement.
Yeah.
And who's paying, you know?
Yeah, there's gonna be.
And our CTE cooperative. Nice thing is our new director, he's a, a Knox graduate. We really like him. We're off to a good start, so he would be great to bring into this.
Especially if you can like use these people. I like that idea of using these folks and the students, everybody to improve it. Like, you're improving our asset anyway.
That's right.
Fit to us.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, thank you guys. Alright, Kelly, sorry. No, well, I know, right. Next Kelly, next Kelly.
It's okay.
No, that's because some people talk too much, not me. Okay.
And they think this isn't the best option, and they tell me to come to you guys, and this is only for the first fifty hours. Um, so for the first fifty hours, it is expected the fee will be between eleven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and twelve thousand four hundred and seventy five dollars. They're estimating it will take between four and eight hours per month to reconcile the statements. Um, so once you guys set them, if you guys set a max, that once we get to that point, I have to come back if it's gonna cost more. Um, I did talk to Tim Berry on Zoom. He is, he was a treasurer for the Allen County. And he was also a state board of account auditor. He works for Crowd, Crow, sorry. Um, but they'll come in, they'll work with me. This is on the very back page, um, very last page.
I'm looking at it.
They'll work with um me to um access the financial system and current. Processes necessary to understand the bank reconciliation needs, work with the county banks and financial systems providers to look for automated opportunities. Complete the bank reconciliation process. Prepare monthly bank reconciliation reports for me to review, approve and upload to Gateway. And they'll create and document processes for bank reconciliation and train me so that I can maintain the bank reconciliation once the backlog is complete.
I think the most important thing in this whole thing is, it's not her fault. She walked into this mess. It wasn't reconciled for the years and a half. So, we shouldn't turn it into the bond company probably.
Yes.
Last year or whatever. So now it's costing us this extra money.
What is the expected overall? Uh, what do, what do you think when it's all said and done? Will it be around that twelve thousand five hundred dollar?
That's for fifty hours. And he is expecting it will take four to eight hours per month. So that first fifty hours is. Hopefully we.
Is that like a big flurry of activity right at the beginning and then the four to eight hours would be, excuse me, like maintenance? Sorry, I didn't have my dinner.
You're fine. I neither. So, yeah, it's a big flurry at the beginning, first fifty hours, get things done, get as much as we can. That is my understanding. And then if there's more stuff to catch up, it would be added on.
How much are they charging for the training?
It's included with that, well, included with that fifty hours.
Like, but doesn't Loud provide training? Like, why wouldn't they be training already? No, just in general, like, is it reconciling part of the regular activities that a treasurer does?
Yes, but it's so far behind with our Loud system. You can only catch up. You have to get done with that one to go on to the next.
I understand that, but I'm saying it's a new system. Oh, they have, okay.
Opened in three or four times.
So the four, after they do the, they give you the, us the fifty hours at the twelve five or twelve four seventy five, right? And then they're saying. Four to five hours a week additional, right? For how long? I mean, are they giving, are they giving you a scope of how many, how many months?
Either, none of the companies that I went with did. Baker Tilly gave me the fifty hours, that's sixteen five.
Right.
Another company gave me just two hundred dollars an hour, didn't even give me an estimate, and then these, the estimate.
Won't you get to the point where once it's reconciled that you'll be able to live all on your own?
Absolutely.
Right, I guess that's what I'm asking. The, the first, the first twelve four, after that. Once it's brought up and caught up. You shouldn't need a lot more help, right? You'll be able to do that on your own.
I thought in the commissioners meeting, you said, they said they thought they could do it in fifty hours.
That he's, he was.
Pretty confident about that.
And it's a year and a half behind?
Was it the last meeting? Wasn't it today?
No, it's in the last meeting.
And ju- just so it's on the record, since it was rather the commissioners meeting, why did the commissioners feel like hiring K. Chafens wasn't an effective way to do this?
The, the problem with hiring someone from the county is number one, we have to bond them. They have.
It's like a thousand bucks to get a bond.
It's minus twelve hundred and fifty dollars a year. I know Lori just thirty five hundred dollars for the year. It all depends.
Right.
Bond is a thing, um.
Is that why though? Is that why they didn't wanna work?
Well, that, that's one. Justin, did we talk about that, about having them come in, like a, a former employee come in? To reconcile and it would be fun thing, it would be, they're not an employee of the county.
Are we on a timeline to get this done with the state board of accounts? Well, that's what I'm asking.
But the big thing about it is if we do this, we're gonna show the state board of accounts, hey, we're doing something, we're doing something right. Because we're gonna get dinged this year from last year, no matter what. We're never being reconciled, that's obvious. We know that.
That's gonna be under observation.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I just, I just wanted to understand, cuz I know the commission's approved this. I'm just asking why they didn't wanna go that route, cuz Kay knows our system and.
And it, it was a big deal not to have someone, like, do have an outside company come in.
Right, just, you know.
Neutral objective folks pay off.
Yeah, like, I don't know. I, I mean, personally, I don't know why we would hire anybody to work here and do it, just from the standpoint of. This is the one situation we're in.
I agree.
Well, that's my opinion. Alright, so the commissioners did approve the twelve thousand, up to the twelve thousand four seventy five bottom cap. That's what the commissioners approved. Up to the role of board.
I'd make a motion that we go and find that after that amount.
Okay, we have a motion second. I'm all in favor? Okay, motion carried.
Okay, can I give you guys a couple more things? So, yeah, over forty percent of the, um, the liquidancies have been collected up to date. Um, to save the hospital fund, which I know, I didn't talk to you guys about it, but I did um resign it back into a CD. So that it's four point three percent. Good. And um.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, and then um there was a discussion about a PO system this morning for PO for.
We've been talking about that for a while.
I did contact Loud today. We do have that in our financial system and I can't figure out how to use it.
Good.
Well, the auditor's office, who has to use it?
Right, you guys too, but I did call Loud today.
That was my question for which offices, just your office?
All good offices have to know, like.
How to use it. Then, then it should be uploaded into their system, so they.
So that, that's in the, in the works now.
I contacted them this morning. Um, there is a email sent out to the financial side of Loud, which we already use. And they know that I'm asking about this and they said they're gonna get back to me immediately.
Thank you.
We're already an hour over your time.
Um, so the commissioners, I guess on like their side, they approved for the text my gov. Mass communication system. So you sat in that meeting.
Yeah, I was real impressed, but.
So can I ask why?
Cuz it's just, it's just, it's just a lot of money and it's all relying on people signing up to for, for one thing.
So North Judson already uses it actually, and I've seen their numbers, like the people that are signed up versus their um population. They're actually really good. It's, so it's simple. You're not having to download an app. You don't have to like follow it online or anything. You scan QR code or you text the number that they'll create for us and you get our non-emergence. Um, text and it, it also has iPods in it, so we had something big happen here. We can use iPods and we go right to their phones. We have the capability of geo convincing too, so it's not just the whole county. If there was something that happened in North Judson. We could, you know, geo fence it just for that area and then everybody that signed up for that could get their text of, you know, about whatever.
Since we don't have it in front of us, how much is it?
So it's six, six thousand five hundred a year. Um, this says seven, but they are taking the five hundred off. For the um being, so we use iWorks already in the planning commission and that's the other side of.
Well, where's, where, where do they, where do they say they're gonna take the money from?
They did not. So they just made a motion to move forward with it. And I said that I was coming in front of you guys tonight and they said, okay, so I don't really know.
Did they get a demo of it today? But I was, I was on YouTube. I can't remember what they learned about it today though.
So we've had two demos. Todd sat in on one with Charlie, I think was on that one, and then Donnie sat in on the other one. Um, they basically got a chance to ask. He, he is online. We also have questions.
Where, where, where will this sit in the future? Is this gonna be in Stanley's budget or where, where's it gonna be parked, like, you know, you know, if we adopt? What, did you guys talk about that? We need that one?
No, commissioners, no, we didn't talk anything about money. What about, what's the funding mechanism?
Yeah, I know. Um, no, I, obviously my budget is not built for that. I think my budget's what about seventy?
Yeah, no, you know, have this.
I don't know, but I fully understand. What were you?
So, so.
What, what, what was that system that the sheriff's office has?
Nixol. We don't have that anymore. And Nixol, so I did look into that because Marshall County's um system was brought to my attention. There's this Nixol. It's nine thousand a year. Um, and it's a, it's an app. So when you open that, like, you're, you've now gotta navigate around and find what, you know, different alert you want. Um.
So this is just texting?
Yeah, it'll send a text to anybody that signs up. Why answer that?
Does it cost the individual user anything? Or is it just a fee the county pays? Like if I wanted to sign up to get the text?
Yeah, if you don't have a subscription fee as someone that signs up or anything like that, this also kinda walks you through kinda what it can do.
So we're talking like this with storm alerts or?
So the non-emergency text would be, um, we could do like our storm alerts, we could. Whether, um, if we have burn bands, like we're under one right now, if it's complaint, is nobody ever knows when we have one. Um, that's iPod, that's the other part of it. So I won't have to become certified for that. That is very limited to what you can send out. But yes, it is capable.
Is that the extra money?
No, it just takes me becoming certified, which I am more than willing to do. It's a email class, so it's no cost to the county for me to become certified. I mean, they're about that too. This is the iPod.
But I think that's, if we're gonna, you know, for, if we're gonna go with a system like this, we, we need to take the most advantage of it and have amber alert, silver alert. Uh, everything.
Yes, so this.
Thinking about you and me.
This system would have it all.
If I may add, add in as well, Tori.
Awful, we're typing it all in and, you know.
So, there's two logins for that and what the commissioners and I talked about, it's me, myself and then Kenny. Um, we would put it in or we can contact our, you know, representative and like. If we're in a disaster and can't take the time to do it, there's other ways to get our, them to do it.
Yes, I'm just thinking administrative time for you. Like, is that gonna be, is that gonna, you know?
So you just log online. Um, you have a login and you just get right on the dashboard and he walked us through the dashboard on that meeting that we had with them and it's. Super simple. It kinda reminds me of WebUC. If you remember.
Yeah, no, I got you there. I just, I was just thinking about what Howard said about other notices, like.
Right.
Alerts and things like that could be, that could be very busy for you, like.
I mean, honestly, cuz they're not emergent. The, uh, the text my gov site is the non-emergent, so however we wanted to structure it, we just need to sit down and.
But somebody would have to send that to you and then you type it in correctly. Like, if, if the meeting notices and all that, like, that could be a lot, should.
Can they come with us a presentation?
So it's online?
We're not, we're not spending an hour online.
No, well, so I'm like, so.
We're not spending an hour online.
Would it be possible for this gentleman to come back at a future meeting and, and, and speak with us for a little bit?
So do you guys wanna set up like a Zoom meeting or something?
Yeah, that would be.
I, I think you said.
Could be anytime.
We talked about this.
You have to publish as a public meeting, cuz the public safety doesn't qualify because this isn't for a school corporation. I originally thought it would, but as long as you publish forty eight hours in advance and you just consider it an open meeting for the public and law.
And that just involves like advertising and Facebook and the building.
I mean, the public would be watching just like.
Yeah, so that's up to you guys, how you wanna do that, um.
I mean, I, I, I understand why we wanna have it, but I think that we need more, we need more reasons to have it.
Mm-hmm. Well, and a public presentation, you could invite the public in that, cuz isn't that who you're wanting to encourage to use us?
Yeah.
Anyway.
If they don't sign up, how do they know?
So, oh, well, um, there's like advertising that you, we would do too, cuz it, QR code that you would scan or text. The number that they create for us and they provide a lot of that advertising and help us utilize like all their tools to do that. Um, North Judson, I know, I even got notified on theirs. They've had it for over a year now and it's great. Like, it's super simple. I just get texts to my phone now every time they say like. You know, run your water cuz the pipes might be freezing, things like that. I don't do anything. Sign up for it once. I don't have to touch it anymore. I just open the message when it comes there.
We don't have reverse nine one one and start counting. It'd be nice if we did. Like, this is like something that can.
Yeah.
Sort of act that way. I'm just, all I'm worried about is putting too much work on you.
Yeah, I, I, I think it needs to stick probably to like the emergency like.
I don't know. See, that's one thing I don't, I don't agree with. If we're putting non-emergency stuff on there, it doesn't have to be. Necessarily the emergency people doing it.
And so then if we're making more work, we need another employee or.
Yeah.
So, so this, okay, so I think you're kinda bleeding excited what it is. So it is like. So like when we had that big hailstorm, we had a four H fair going on. Was that two summers ago? It'd have been great to be able to like reach out to people. But all we use, yeah, all we utilize is Facebook. Well, like, I'm thirty six years old and even I don't get on Facebook all the time, like, so. I get members of our public that are constantly calling me that I'm not doing my job because they don't get any kind of notification.
Probably it's kinda fair. You might have a lot of people that aren't even in the county, so they're not gonna get it anyways.
Well, and it deserve, it depends too, what sort of, uh, what sort of, uh, uh, sound comes along with the notices. Cuz I know when I was driving through Mississippi and there was a tornado and my phone screamed at me and flashed, it got my attention.
Those are like your iPods saying, those are the big, the big things that if you're peeing in that area, it will. Now, you're not emergent, which is like the text my gov text that you've been signed up for. They will not do that. You have to be signed up for those.
Mm-hmm.
But we have a tornado touch here or something like, that's, that's a bigger deal, you know?
Yeah, I, I would like to do that. I'd like to get.
Have dedicated to that instead of, cuz we're not gonna do it now because we're like way over schedule.
So, so real quick, real, real quick, how, does it cost more for more logins? Let's say if it did become too big of a workload for you, does it cost more to add more logins to the system?
I only know of the two they recommend.
That will be unlimited users.
Thank you.
Yep. And you also, you also have full access. Text my gov is a part of iWork, but text my gov has its separate. Employee base, which includes a marketing team. And that's what Tori was referring to with getting this off the ground, is you'll have full access to. An enhanced media care package that we just threw in with this.
Okay.
So what do we need to do to?
I, I do have a question. No, you're fine, but I gotta. Hailstorms, amber alerts, silver alerts, tornadoes, emergency situations in the county. Emergency situations in the county. Other situations that Todd referenced, we talk about that are non-emergency situations. Do we know the percentage of how much is gonna be used for emergency and how much for non-emergency?
So, so that would be how we structure, how we wanna utilize.
Okay, well, the reason why I'm asking that is. Emergency situations are emergency situations. Non-emergency, I don't, are not. I don't see paying six thousand dollars for a non-emergency situation. Now, if somebody's walking through the counter, if, if we got a tornado blowing in right now and, and we all get alerts. So that's an alert. I agree with it.
My thought behind it was the, the emergency side of it, like we need. In my opinion, we need a way to reach the public. Like, they are kind of screaming for it. Like, I get chewed out all the time.
And it's a some, a way to spend their taxpayer dollars that actually directly provides them with a service.
So, I mean, we have to do the work at getting it out there for them to know that they have it, but.
No, I, I'm not disagreeing with the system. I just, it, it would be typically for emergency situations. Okay.
Let's meet, what do we have? Out or to the auditor and schedule.
Anything that enhances the benefits.
Dates at me. I'll work with him and we can set something.
If mine, mine pretty much have to be in the evenings, like five thirty, something like that.
Any day, I don't care.
Any day.
I'll zoom in. Well, then we need to get this over with then.
So when did we decide to hold a meeting?
Just, just shoot me if you want. And all, after I hear from you guys, I'll figure it out again.
How long are you gonna be gone, Dave?
Well, one thing that. David mentioned worrying about overloading your, I don't even know what you do.
Send us five bullet points.
Email these packets to you guys that he. All right, me, thank you.
Thank you, Joel. All right, you're finally up. I don't wake up.
I've been here fourteen hours.
That's all right. I've done enough for, I don't know.
Uh, during these which was leading today to ask me to come and ask for same money I asked for last week, the last time I was here. As for the renovation of the jail. Two hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
So it's over three hundred thousand with all this other stuff. I don't even know what's in Q cap.
And they said take it to our Q cap.
Well, we don't know if there's that much in there. Yeah, I don't know.
Did she happen to give you a budget set? So then. The two forty would make more sense if we ceded. Just because Q cap, they're gonna, they're gonna go out of Q cap early to Todd's point.
You know, the only thing about all this. I'm just gonna be totally for a percent honest. Show us why you need to spend this much money and the money spending has gotta stop. Because we are like a bunch of drunken sailors spending money.
The only thing I know about, the reason why, cause the health department needed more room. So correction give up the meeting room for them to put in two offices and make a little meeting room, so. They said they would redo the back for the corrections.
Why couldn't they share me the room? So in the same building? I mean, I don't know. I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at from a money standpoint. I mean, somebody has to prove why. Why are we gonna spend three hundred thousand dollars that we, we don't even know if we have? I mean, I know we've got it seated.
Yeah, well, you know, the other, I do have one question about this, about the construction. We have like made this continuous roofs before. Is, is this gonna have any kind of warranties for like leakage and things with it also?
With the construction, yeah, well, sure, we're bad. It's EA, E A M, which is a union workshop, so yeah.
He's not a union.
Well, no, he hires you. Then the annex one. Uh, guard systems around here is rested. They especially really need done, especially on the west side over there. We don't take care of that. You remember back a few years, they flooded basement? And got mold, so.
So the gutters are only like fifty-four hundred dollars for this building?
Yes.
Is that complete?
That's the same as H, H P, I don't wanna be outplayed with leaf guards.
I don't see any reason why we get.
We don't know how much we've used. I mean, how much is in seated? I mean, I know there's a lot.
Oh, a lot, yeah. It's like one point five million.
Hey, do you know? But still, there, we were supposed to have a capital improvement plan in place in order to be using seated on pretty much anything, hasn't it? And nobody can find our capital improvement plan and I'm hesitant to keep. Taking money out of that fund when we don't have the proper prerequisite. I think the commissioners need to put one in place before we can continue.
Find the old one.
Yeah.
The original one.
If the ordinances get codified, maybe that will get uncovered, but. They need to do something. We can't just keep using seated for whatever we feel like. We have to follow the law.
In this case though, we, we do have a very limited space for the health department. I don't know if anybody's ever been to the Ford County Health Department. It's. Beganic. I'm just saying here, it's only two rooms and it is pretty small. We took some other space.
And then the concrete. They approved Herford for the job on that, which it has not, will not include the bison yet.
Oh, that's not including the bison?
So the bison, I got it all figured out, but. Gotta get a major to get, get Herford over here, get a bid on.
I mean, where is this concrete? Yeah, I mean, that, that, that's, that's one thing about this. We have like very limited information on how we're spending this money. This concrete work.
You guys had it last week or two weeks ago. You had all the information on that. That's going up annex one, some curb three done. Yeah, where's ADA ramps over the old uh memorial, ADA ramps at the west end of the courthouse.
ADA ramps out in the three?
Yes, because it uh, right now it's got the asphalt and ADA ramps, you gotta have less than a half inch.
I put a bunch of them in before.
So.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would make a motion that we go ahead and approve the fifty-four hundred dollars for the. For the gutters and the leaf guard. Uh, quite honestly. The information that we have in front of us is, is not sufficient for me. Now, you said we had this information before. I think the commissioners. Surely had, but I, I've never seen any other information. So I'm, I'm only willing to make a motion on the, on the gutters and the leaf guard.
I would second the motion on the gutters.
Okay, we have a motion to, for fifty-four hundred dollars. Were we gonna take it? It's probably gonna have to come out of Q cap.
Q cap.
Can we, can we do it out of Q cap?
Yeah, it's capital improvement.
But this other stuff, no, no offense, Rick, but I, I'm, I'm almost, I'm, I'm, I'm almost appalled. That's all you gave us.
Yeah, I didn't know I was supposed to bring that.
I have to have a reason why we're gonna spend the money. So, I mean, so we have a motion. On the floor, we have a second to through the fifty-four hundreds for the gutters and leaf guards for this building and it's one. Uh, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Maybe they'll have the um, the additional for the bison by the, by the next meeting though.
He's gonna make a motion to table the other two parameters until we get more information.
Explain to us, I mean, is that out of, is that out of reason to know where we're?
I, I, I don't know the politics of what you gotta do. Well, I've been working the last two years. I didn't come up with what I wanted from the commissioners. I've never had it come from the uh council to ask for money.
Well, we, we, we've made it quite evident that if somebody wants us to appropriate money, we need to know at least six weeks.
Commissioners would talk to you guys and so you guys are all in one vote, know what's going on. So.
But I mean, but here's the thing, I, if you mean all in one vote as far as the commissioners and the council, we're not all in the vote. Their administration. We're a financial body.
Yep.
And we, and we get things, we get things bordered too much and it's not helpful.
We, we have, we have a motion for it from Cassie to table the, the jail renovation and also the concrete work. At a second, all favor? Most of the carry. So we'll see you in a month probably, Rick.
Yeah.
Okay, next thing, um, I guess I need a motion to open up the public hearing. For the total additional appropriations.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, the hearing is open. Do we have any comment from the public? For the sheriff's cars, the lights and sirens extra, the platinum sponsorship for the start tank two thousand twenty-five?
Who's doing the lights and sirens?
That's for the police. Who's doing the work?
Yeah. Because I thought it was like sixteen thousand dollars and I thought, whoa, nobody's really mentioning that. Small chunk.
At the last meeting, it came back with, with the quote for, for that amount.
It is an excellent question. We used to always reuse the lights.
Yeah, so, good question. The health insurance serves the commissioner's budget. Because we had to take money and make it short file, file. Short haul, thank you. And the other one would be a salary notice for every year help, right? Salary insurance amendment and additional appropriations for that. Do we have a public comment? I can both public hearing, right?
Motion to close though.
Yeah, do you have a motion to close? Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing closed. Okay? Next thing on the list is approval of the minutes.
Oh, that's what you were. I didn't sign that.
Well, you have to make a motion to approve the additional.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, since we have a public hearing, do we have a?
This is just a follow-up for students.
All right, so. We need, we need a motion to prove the following. Here, somebody else read this. I'm not making a motion. I used to have, I used to have to always read them. Maybe they'll have to do it.
Yeah, okay, um, I'll make a motion to approve the additional appropriation. The resolution on the ordinance number zero four, twenty twenty-five. Proved in the public hearing by the funding county general. Two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five. Total proceeded four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Q cap. The sheriff, one hundred and ten thousand, two ninety-two. Um, other services and charges for bridge consultant, which we didn't mention that, but thirty-three thousand, four hundred and a total for Q cap of one hundred and forty-three thousand. Six ninety-two.
Do we have a motion? Do we have second?
All second.
Yeah, have a motion, a second, all favor?
All right.
All right, do we have any minutes?
Yep.
Okay. I'm gonna start.
Two joints. No, no, an executive irregular.
Okay, we have three, we. We have three different ones here. Okay, so we have the meetings from uh one thirty, the executive session, twelve eighteen, or I'm sorry, two eighteen, February eighteenth and March twelfth. Minutes to be included for. We can make them all once.
I'm moved to accept as uh we received.
Here, we have a motion from Bruce to accept the call minutes. We have a second, okay? All in favor?
Okay.
Okay. Real quick, I would, let's get this over with. Um, I would like, I would like to have the auditor bring us all the fund balances before our meetings. So we know.
Before?
Or, or at our meetings at least, so we know, so we can look at something and say.
We used to always do a budget status report.
We should have that.
It's only two page year.
Okay, and the other thing, real, real quick. The sheriff was on her. I told them they could leave because actually I just got a message now. That bill is in the senate to redo our, our um jail seated or special seated. Cause we met with Presso and David already talked to Presso about it and he rewrote the bill. So it is in the senate right now. So if that passes, that'll probably, that'll take care of all our worries. If not, it's already marched, so we're not gonna get any more trouble over in now. And he was gonna make a legislative to last year. I didn't attend the meeting.
That way it clear exonerates us.
Yeah, exactly.
Todd, I have one thing.
Okay, Dave.
I'll make it really fast.
Okay.
But um, several people probably already know that Nextera does have a permit for that additional project. I'm just saying this from one of seven. I feel like it would be remiss if we did not at least look at what they're offering for E D A. Otherwise, that money's gonna go back to the state. And rather than us being able to use it, Jim Fresso will tell you, that's why the state created that legislation was so that small. Unions like ours that have renewables. And take advantage of those.
Well, all I can say is if I have anything to do with any other E D A or E R rate, it's not gonna make me negotiate like the last one.
Maybe I shouldn't sign it.
It's gonna be like.
Need an initial copy of it.
It's gonna be, yeah.
How did they get a permit with the moratorium?
I don't know. That's fine, Commissioner. Anyone know?
Okay, so you were an app on doing.
I was on Zoom. That was just my point, Todd, that we should do what the offer is from them. From, from Nextera.
I mean, that's not gonna happen for, for a year anyways, there's a moratorium.
No, they're building that one. It's permitted. It's gonna be built. The next, the battery and the store and the solar there. Future ones are not.
So they, they got us nothing for the batteries after they went through all their trouble having the battery moratorium?
For future projects, there's a battery moratorium. Yeah, I thought it was, that was in the process.
Yeah, but it wasn't finally approved by the drainage board or anybody. It was approved by the drainage board. Not, not before the moratorium was, because it said right in the, I was at the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see what you're saying. No, but the, the drainage board did approve it ultimately. Oh, no, I'm there.
Do you have anything else?
I have something.
Okay.
Um, I really felt bad with Kelly Shepherd. We had spoke at our last council meeting about putting him on the agenda. I spoke to Michaeline on several occasions in the last couple of weeks. We even had emails from her confirming and asking what Kelly was put on there. It was quite embarrassing to find out today that, that he was not. On. The agenda, so I don't know how we, how we rectify that and I. I was really disappointed today.
I would like to have, when we get notices of um. Special sessions or joint sessions. Um, for people like me that if I don't see in a heading that the council is involved, I don't open it. So if you guys could put in the heading or make a blurb outside of the attachment. That this is for council and.
Unions don't get to send those things out.
I beg your pardon.
The deputies don't send. I will, you need to make notation for Michaeline.
All right, anything else? Bruce? No, I'm good. Thank you. Kathy? My friend Kay? Howard? Good. Everybody good? Okay, have a motion, Jerry?
I make that motion.
I'll say.
Miss, Miss San Antonio. Great, well, that's what I was just gonna say for now. I didn't know, cause we already have three partners. Are you gonna see Kathy again, cause she left the books and she said she wanted.